Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence Subcommittee for the Housing, the Lawrence Housing Subcommittee. Please join me for the pleasure of a legion. Alright. Members of this Subcommittee present tonight. Vice Chair Anna Levy.
Present.
Councilor Plant. And myself, Giovanni Rodriguez. We have a few items tonight that we're gonna be discussing. One of the item that we're gonna be taking into consideration, starting with the agenda. Item 10818 is the review of the Museum Square apartment easement agreement. And for that item, I would like to go through and maybe have a few department heads to come over to actually discuss this item with us. I would like to say that this is Councilor Plant's district, but this is an issue that is affecting the entire city. With that being said, councilors, there is any specific or questions that you might have on this item before we make a motion to invite different departments to be, to join us? Alright, may I get a motion to get, oh, to get, to send correspondence to Mark Ianello, as well as the City Attorney and the Director of the DPW, the DPW Directors to be present on our next Housing Committee meetings? Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
Second.
Are you making a motion?
I can make a motion, yes.
Second discussion, so who, who are you? Mr. Ianello, Mr. Hackes, and who else?
And the City Attorney. Do you have any other suggestions that we should have here present with us? I also would like to send correspondence to the other party that is involved in this contract, which is the Museum Square's classification. So, there is a motion on the table, there's any other discussion?
Are you, Mr. Chairman, are you including Museum Square as part of that motion? Is that what Ms. Levy's gonna be including?
Are you, can you include that part as well on the motion?
We'll.
To include the other party of this contract, which is the Museum Square?
Yes, we can include it.
To send correspondence to them, to them, and that way we can go through the contract. So, there is a motion on the table to send correspondence to the DPW Director, the City Attorney, as well as Mark Ianello, who is our Finance Director, as well as the other body involved in this contract, which is the Museum Square. So, there is a motion on the table, probably second, hold on some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to table item 10818?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have an item which is 77 Union Street, what's the item number on the?
27412, it stated.
274?
27412.
Can I get a motion to get item 274, 274 12 out of the table matters?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, item 27412 is the 77 South Union, South Union Street Rooming House, and the status of this. We have different departments here present tonight that they're gonna offer us an update on this item. We originally invited somebody from the Inspection Service, as well as the Fire Department and the Police Department. There is anybody else that is supposed to be present tonight?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to let you know that the owner of 77 South Union Street is here this evening.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you for being here. Yes, can, can we proceed with the different departments to give us a quick update on this, on this matter? Perhaps we can start with the Police Department?
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors.
Just name my address for the record.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Chief Roy Vasquez, along with Detective Angel Lopez, who's very familiar with the property, as part of his assignments, he keeps an eye on the property. Also, the Community Policing Division does checks of the property and also runs the names of the individuals in the property to see if anybody has any outstanding warrants. During 2017, the Lawrence Police Department has answered a total of 188 calls for service at 77 South Union Street. So far, for 2018, we have answered a total of 40 calls for service. As the councilor stated, this location is owned slash managed by Mr. Andy Menery. The property consists of 70 units. We have spent a good amount of department resources allocated to this location for a different number of investigations, to include fights, unwanted guests, robberies, some drug overdoses, disturbances, domestics, missing persons, and several others also in and around the building in various side streets. We've had some anonymous information, it is believed that prostitution and drug sales have also been part of this problem ongoing at the building. Unfortunately, some of these individuals involved do live at the, or have lived, I should say, at the location. You'd have to check if that's still an ongoing issue with them. And I believe in some of my conversations with Mr. Menery that he has removed some of the individuals that, specifically in my talking with him in terms of the drug dealers, they, you know, he evicts them when he gets that information, the prostitutes as well, or if someone is thought of as being a prostitute or has been arrested as such, that information is given to him and he's been evicting those individuals. Given the complaints and illegal activities surrounding the building, we've worked with Mr. Menery in regards to keeping no trespassing signs around the building. As I stated earlier, we have assigned a liaison to the rooming houses in the city of Lawrence, not only this one, to cross-reference any individuals with outstanding warrants that have such for their arrest. Based on the number of warrants revealed from the list, these individuals are arrested and brought before the court. In addition, recently, we have just assigned a community policing officer to walk the beat throughout that neighborhood, specifically targeting or keeping an eye on 77 South Union Street. That's Detective David LeBeck. That's the basis of the information that we have, unless you have something particularly you'd like to ask.
Madam Chair, I got a question.
Okay.
So, just as I'm gonna be asking a police, fire, and any other city officials that are here. We were here in this room, maybe a year and a half or so ago, talking about this. And at that time, it seemed from the, if I recall correctly, from the police reports, that there weren't a number of calls for service, but it, the calls for service were a lot of ambulance kind of things. And it wasn't outlandish, I mean, it was pretty mundane, at least back then. And the officer who was in your position, who gave us the overview, said that things seemed to be relatively in control. I'd like to understand, I like to compare where we are today as to where we were back then, or the way around, where we are back then to where we are today. Are we improving? Is, is, and I don't wanna, I mean, clearly, we're, we're talking about 77, right? But while that's the hub of that area, to me, it's not just 77, it's that whole area. Besides that, it's the intersection of Salem, Springfield, and South Union Street where that's, where that's the hub. So, I'd like to get an idea, are we making progress, improvements? Give me an overview of, of, how does the Police Department view the, what's happening there?
I think we've come a long way, and I'm sure Mr. Menery can attest to this. He's, he's assisted us in many ways, and it starts even providing this list is a huge step. The walking beat that we added, not only called 77 South Union Street, but also these adjacent streets, Springfield Street, South Union Street, where you get these local prostitutes or individuals that committed these crimes used as a local hangout. This corner was a hotspot zone where you would have 20 to 30 individuals hanging out, given what this walking beat and also concentrating these areas, that's eliminated that completely. He's taken some steps as far as securing the doors on this property where people used to sneak in through the alleyways. Don't, that, that's no longer an issue now. So, we've, I would say we've definitely come a long way as far as the, the types of crime we're getting in this area now.
So, that seems to be in a bit of a conflict by the testimony that was just offered. We've got more calls for service in that area now than we've had in some time. So, while I'm hearing on one side that things are in control, I'm also hearing that we've got more calls for service. So, can you, can you make me understand a little bit better what I think is a disconnect?
I think, I think in doing quick math, if my math is correct, just for this first quarter, we've had 40. We should see if the, if the calls stay, at least the trend, and or now working with Mr. Menery and he's, we should see a significant drop moving forward. So, even based on this initial 40 calls in the first quarter, if you will, you know, we'd be about, we'd be less than what we had in 2017. But I, you know, feel confident that giving what we've done over there in terms of the walking beat now assigned over there permanently, and also what Mr. Menery has done, I think, I would, I would hope that in the next couple of months, we see even more of a drop in calls for service over there. Based on what I've seen over there lately, drive by, and I don't see the people hanging out front and things of that nature. So, my hope is that calls for service will go down in the next couple of months.
So, let me paint for you a picture. I'm not sure if anybody from our neighborhood is there tonight on this. I certainly sent some emails out to make sure people are aware. But, but if they're not here, let me paint the picture of the concern that in the, last year when I was walking, maybe things have changed in the last quarter. But the concern is, and, and again, it's, their perception is that this location is the hub of this depravity, this illegal activities. Mr. Menery is here, he can speak to that as well. Hopefully, we'll give him the opportunity to speak. But what I'm hearing from the residents, the good God-fearing residents of that neighborhood, is that they're seeing prostitutes, they're seeing drug deals, they're seeing people who look rather, I mean, this is the appearance of rather shady, suspicious activities that are going on in and around that area. And it makes them feel very unsafe. And of course, because of the proximity and the location of that building, they immediately think that it must be coming from that building, and that's the hub of the problem. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But that's their feeling, and it's important for me to express that on their behalf, so that you under, well, I'm sure you already know this, but, so they understand that I understand that, and I'm telling you, through you, Madam Chair, what they feel is a problem there.
I would say, I would say you're right in, in that regard. I think a lot of that is attributed to its location and its proximity to the South Common, an area especially in the warmer months where people gather on the steps across the street. Then people generally drift back towards Springfield Street and South Union Street, inevitably landing at the, at the front stoop of this location, interacting with, with the residents, some of whom in the past have been less than, less than desirable, let's say. So, that's certainly, that's certainly on our radar moving forward. Again, my hope would be that with the elimination of some of the residents that he's taking care of, with the steps that we've taken care of, and hopefully, also with some residences on Springfield Street that the walking beat will address, hopefully, that sort of congregation, if you will, would dissipate, you know, better than we've seen in recent years. At least, that's my, that's my hope moving forward, and I guess Mr. Menery can speak to his own residents and what he's done over there in terms of his clientele.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question. Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Who is the owner or who is the person who managed the building? Do you know?
Mr. Menery.
Okay. For how long are you?
Over three and a half years.
Mr. Chairman, you may ask Mr. Menery, maybe.
Yeah, if you can take over, if you can take that out, the mic.
Please.
It's been about three and a half, coming up on four years. When I bought the building, only 19 rooms were rented. The whole top third, second and third floor didn't even have doors, because they were kicked in so many times. People use drugs, they just took the doors right off. So, calls are gonna go up because 19 rooms rented now, this, it's been fully occupied, going on three years. We've tried different types of tenants, and lately, we've had more luck with long-term and people paying if they're on SSI or disability. But that'll also lead to a lot of calls, as he mentioned, via ambulances, because we have a lot of sick and elderly now. So, you might see more ambulances and police, and you might get more calls, but that doesn't mean the building's worse. Sometimes it means it's better. I was talking to Officer Lopez about, we, you could go through a six-month period where the police aren't called. That doesn't mean the building's safer or any better. It just means sometimes there's a drug ring and people are afraid to call the police. So, now that there's, there's far more police presence, but that doesn't mean people aren't safer. It means they're comfortable with the police, they're calling the police, they're telling the police more information. The police come by a lot to show pictures of wanted people. As I mentioned, we give them a weekly update of all the tenants, so they run warrant checks. So, working with the police in more presence just means it's, it's safer. There used to be, when they got rid of a lot of people on South Broadway, they kind of made their way on Springfield Street, and yet people would corrugate kind of on that corner. And it took months and months to shoot them along, because the building was abandoned for years. So, of course, they're used to going in there to use their drugs. And that's a hard habit to finally kick them off. But it took, it took a long time, but I feel like we did get rid of them, and they've moved on. I mean, it's been cold, so they might be, come back in the summer. But last year, the police put a video surveillance van right on Springfield Street. That got rid of them right away.
So, is the lease a one year, six month, one week? How did you rent the property?
I'm sorry.
This is a single unit? The rent, the lease of the property? So, when you rent?
You get tenants to pay every week?
Oh, it's a.
A weekly?
No, no, no weekly tenants, it's all month to month. I'd say over 80% are on SSI.
So, but is it going like a month by month?
Month by month, yeah. Many long-term tenants, some have been there 30, 40 years, a lot of elderly. I would love it if, that's why I asked the Councilman and the Police Chief to tour the building. I don't, I took a little bit of offense to the term "conditions" of 77, because to me, the building's never been cleaner, it's never looked better. We've had very little fire issues, replaced all the sprinklers, the fire codes. We've, we've, I've never had one building violation, I've never had one health code violation. They do quarterly checks with the Fire Department, they literally go room to room and check every CO. They check every fire alarm, they inspect the rooms for cleanliness for, just to make sure it's safe. So, it's, the Fire Department's there a lot, the police are there a lot, but when they come in, as I said, it's, it's a positive presence. It's, I, I know the calls are up, but a lot of it is ambulances and health. And there's been very little violence or bad characters in the last, I'd say, two years.
I was the manager of the property that is on Market Street. The one right across the, the place that they, what is the name?
Bay State Building?
No, it's Market Street, yes. It's, um, what is the name? And I have a lot of complaint, like from that was coming also, all of these people that live on that property that you are managing right now. It's the one right across the, I can't remember the name of the names. So, and they used to cross through the alleyway in between the building and also to go to the Market Street property. At one point, there is somebody who was living there, clearly one of the, a person right in front of one of my.
You mean the alleyway behind 77?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I put motion sensor lights, I put Doberman alarms there. I pay all-day junk removal, not only to clean my building, I have them clean the whole alleyway, all the way down. So, if you notice, that street's a lot cleaner than it's been in years. So, every time the City Inspector comes by and complains about it, all-day junk calls me, and I pay for it to clean, no matter who's. I pay for the dumpster that that whole street fills their dump in, so, yeah.
That's the property right across, just on Lumber. So, that was.
Three, any other question? I cancel the panel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, do you have cameras in the front or anything like that?
Yep, yep, we have 34 cameras throughout the building. It goes right to my phone, so I monitor it all day and night. I can see the lobby, anytime something happens in the lobby. I updated all the fire alarms, so that goes right to my phone. And what, like, my first six months, I don't think a week would go by without an alarm going off. It just had an old antiquated alarm system. I think they had $18,000 in liens for just false alarms. And I haven't had one false alarm in three years, so.
Thank you.
There's any other question for the Police Department? For the owner?
Not right now, for me, thank you. Police, Fire Chief is here, Mr. Chairman. Fire Chief is here.
Yes, yes, definitely, I want to take him next. So, we're gonna proceed with the Fire Department now to provide us with an update on this property?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes.
We don't, we like the building, we like the new owner, it's a very positive thing. That place used to be a dive, we went there a lot. In nine, in 2012, we had over 80 incidents there, 2011, 95. So far, in 17 and eight, 2017 and 18, we've only been there 40 times. 17 of them have either been canceled in route or medicals. Certainly not the owner's problem if somebody has a medical. Our inspections have been thorough, he's let us in and cooperated and been with our inspectors for all the inspections. We've tested every room, CO detector, smoke detector. When it's been broken, he's replaced it immediately. When battery's been missing, he's replaced it immediately. The building is fully sprinkled. In 2017 and 18, we did not have a single fire incident there. Alarms tend to go off occasionally, but not very often. And in the two, those two years, we'd only been there 10 times for an alarm activation. The biggest thing was, was the medicals. I've been a paramedic here in the city since 87, and we used to go there all the time for medicals. When it was known as a flop house, not, not, not a nice, you know, single remorgancy now. And I gotta say that this gentleman has done a tremendous job, as far as the Fire Department is concerned. We inspect top to bottom, the basement, he cleans it up, we have an issue, he takes care of it. We, on the Fire Service, are quite pleased with him and, and what he's done.
So, Chief, I'm glad that you say that the, the, the things is getting better, that the building, in terms of the alarm system and the smoke detector. But I see a good amount of phone calls of the alarm system. There is anything that we can do for the future on that?
Well, not, not in 2017 and 18. I, I gave you a list, but if you looked at the date, they go back quite a bit. I gave you a number of years there. So, so they're dated. So, in 2017 and 18, we've only been there 10 times. He has replaced the system and he's done quite well. 10 in two years is nothing. We spend on some buildings 10 times in a weekend.
So, it's been improvement?
Oh, dramatic, yes, absolutely, Councilor.
Okay. Councilors, floors open for questions.
I have one more question to.
Uh, Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Done with me?
Yes, do you? Thank you, Chief. Yes. When you rent the space, do you run any query credit report on the person?
Yep, we do a query, and, and not only do we run a query, we send the police as soon as they rent the establishment. We send the police the date of birth, social security number and everything, and they do a warrant sweep weekly and come back. So, if there's a problem with anybody, they come and pick them up sometimes the next day. So, most of the tenants have not only had a background check, and then I do a check with the courthouse, see how many evictions they have, and then I'm, so, police are well aware of, and they, they get, multiple departments of the police come in if there, if there's any predators or, you know, that way they keep an eye on them, so.
Alright.
I think there's only, I think there's two in the building, but they, they literally come weekly to check, check up on them.
Thank you.
There is any other question for the owner, in the meantime, for the owner?
I have a question for Mr. Vargas. He's not expecting this at all, this is an absolute curveball, Mr. Vargas. Thank you for coming tonight.
Just name the address for the record.
Abel Vargas, 610 Higginville Street.
You did not expect this question?
I did not, I did not, but.
There was a rooming house on Common Street, are you aware of that at one time?
I am aware of that.
Is that rooming house still in existence?
That, it, there, there are residents, there are, there are residents in that building, but it went from being 77 units of rooming housing units to, I want to say, 21 units of family one, two, and three-bedroom units.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vargas. Can I call the, through you, may I call the Police Chief up, please? Again, not expecting this, a question from me, but if you have any insight about the change that has happened on Common Street, when it was a rooming house and now a family setting, and I know we didn't ask this, but if you have any information on that, can you give some insights into what kind of changes that may have taken place there?
Remarkable, I mean, I think it's been fully renovated, and I think, as Mr. Vargas stated, it's more of a, more of a upscale, if you will, sort of clientele indoor. I'm not sure what the monthly bill is there to, to live there, but I think it's, it's a, it's a higher sort of clientele that's now living in the building. I don't remember any calls for service to that address since it closed and then reopened.
You all 575 Common, you'd be there 20 times in one day.
Right.
If there's no location now, if I went there once in the last six months, it's locked.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's any neighbors in here this evening. I emailed some folks this morning, and I know it's kind of late, so if they're there, I, I don't see any. But I guess the point that I, the reason why I've asked these questions to Mr. Vargas and to the Police Chief, Chief Vasquez, and to Officer Lopez is what Mr. Menery's doing is a lawful business. He's doing the best job that he possibly can that I can see, and that's what I'm hearing from not only the Police Chief, who says that not only do they have cameras there, they've, that he's been responsive. The Fire Chief has said the same thing, we have an officer on the beat. The trend lines from this year so far seems to have been reduced for calls for service. And if I believe Mr. Menery correctly, and if, if this is inaccurate, I will ask the Police Department to correct me. Mr. Menery has made these suggestions this evening, that there's been greater cooperation with the Police Department. Therefore, there are more police calls being made because they trust the Police Department enough to make those phone calls. So, if, if, if that's being disputed, let me know, but based on that, based on that comment, I'm gonna go with it. So, I'm, are you, I'm shaking my head, yes or no? Do you agree with Mr. Menery's observation that there's a greater trust and because of that, there's less?
Yes, just come to the mic, please.
I don't think it's they ever didn't trust the police, I just think it's in-house. If there's a drug ring running in a building, they're point-blank gonna say, "You call the police, you know what I mean? You're a snitch." So, if the police aren't around, the Bay State Building had 120 calls from multiple departments, two calls to the police. I'd argue that's not the police's fault, that's because there's probably a bad element in that building, people, so it's not, but I'd also argue Bay State Building, as soon as they made those condominiums, look what happened. You, you mentioned turning Valley North into, those apartments go on $1,800. What do you, I know that the Fire Departments and the police have been there more, but as I said, a lot of that is ambulance calls, because you, I have a lot of elderly people paying 600 a month, where are they gonna go? They can't pay 600.
They can't pay sixteen hundred dollars a month to move into Valley North. You can make it a three-bedroom house, but these people are on SSI. They they need housing, they need somebody who's gonna be there. I'm there, I'm there with the nurses every day, telling them when they're off their meds, I'm there greeting the nurses when they're not feeling right. You need buildings like this in Lawrence. You need low-income housing, and it's, I could turn it into three-bedroom condos for two thousand a month. It's not, it might get quieter, but where are these people gonna go?
A quick question for you. How many of SSI's people you have there renting?
Almost eighty percent.
Eighty percent?
Yeah.
So you you're saying that eighty percent of those people have drug abuse, drug
No, they're on SSI, meaning
Only the twenty percent, can we identify those twenty percent then?
I'm sorry?
So you're saying that people that have SSI's, they are the one responsible for all those phone calls that the police have reported to us?
No, no, of course not. But but the bulk of the the fire department calls, when the fire department's called for somebody having a panic attack, the fire and the police both show up for, so one elderly person could have the fire department there ten times in one month.
We have, we have problems with the police department, that we we have drug overdose, robberies, disturbance, domestic, missing person, and all those stuff.
That's throughout the years, and a lot of that's reputation, but if you go through the calls, I I I don't think there's been one many violent or arrests or violent acts since I've been there. It's it's, if you, I I asked the sergeant, night sergeant, to drive by every night at three AM. He says it's a ghost town every night.
Let me, let me, let me get the police department on the the mic. So, Chief, can you go through that the police calls to see what's the kinda like, probably, a good, I guess, a percentage of what's the problem there?
Mr. Chair, I I think that they're, we're gonna, about to make copies.
Oh, okay.
The chief might not have that information.
I would say some of our calls for service, Mr. Menery is right, that it happens outside the building, on the side of the building, in the alleyway of the building, so it's around the building. We may not get called for apartment twelve inside of seventy-seven South Union Street, but certainly the side of the building, I've worked narcotics cases myself where dealing was happening on the side of the building. I've, myself, have picked up prostitutes from the side of the building. Now, some of them live there, some of them didn't, but the element is around the building. I think that's what we're trying to say, is the building and the elements around the building are a problem, which is what Councilor Plant is 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 hearing from the residents. So it's in and around the building, but I would say, you know, based on the last couple of months just going by there, and speaking, Mr. Menery, it's gotten better, and my hope would be that it's gonna continue to get better. So it may not be apartment twelve inside of seventy-seven South Union Street, again, that's giving us the call, but in, around, the back of the building, people hanging out in the common, it's all around that, around that that building. But we're experiencing a number of our resources being used.
So basically, a lot of the calls are from around the the building and some, some of them from the building. Can we be more precise and more specific in terms of calls coming from the building, because it's unfair for us to talk about this and have this gentleman coming in front of us and saying, oh, this building is a problem, anybody that sees this.
Well, I would say this, we're not getting the calls, you know, we're not getting the calls the next block up, you know, from, for the same amount of calls, so it's it's, and it's also people that, people that associate with these people that live in the building. So can I say it's a resident of the building? No, but it's probably someone hanging out with the resident of the building. We're getting a little bit of everything. There's a lot of, lot of units in there, so a lot of people hanging around, people hanging around with those people, and they all tend to congregate, congregate in and around that area. So we're having a little bit of both, calls from inside the building and calls from outside the building.
Let's see their call list.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, Councilor Piana?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, I I think that it's understood that there is a problem, where whether it's coming from the residents or people, you know, friends of the residents, you know, maybe that part is debatable, but there's definitely an issue, and I think that people from from that neighborhood have definitely brought up instances where they've asked a drug addict, you know, kinda get out of their lawn, or, you know, they've, you know, catching people urinating, and they they seem to think at least that the problem is coming from that property. While that being said, from what I'm hearing, I I think what I'm hearing from your department and the fire department is that things are better than they were before, and that there seems to be some strategy in place to try to improve things. So I I I guess my, my question is, what else can we be doing to make things safer for the, for that neighborhood and ensure that some of these, like, bad folks are not hanging around there?
Right.
Is there any sort of advice that you might give?
So short of, short of turning this establishment into five seventy-five Common Street, what that is now, we just have the hope that our efforts in the walking beat and more activity there on our side and his interact, his steps that he's taking with cameras and signage, as we all met with him over there, the hope would be that the calls for service go down. As you can see from the list of calls for service that you have, they run the gamut. And some of them are us going over there, the police department going over there, serving warrants. Again, we run everybody for warrant checks, so we go over there and serve a warrant. We got another call for disturbance, domestic. Three more warrant service. We went over, someone went over there to repossess a vehicle, there was a motor vehicle stop there. Another check the well-being in that address, a domestic, another disturbance, investigations, unknown problems. So there's a, it's a gamut of things. We had a B and E in there, another check the well-being. So, you know, there are definitely calls there. Loud noise, unknown problem, missing person, disturbance, again, keep the peace, medic support, we served the two-one-nine A there, there was an assault and battery passed there. You know, there's, there's a whole gamut of there, there's a fight.
You even have shoplifting.
I'm sorry?
You even have shoplifting there. I don't know how.
And again, you can see on, on page two, there's
Somebody selling something there.
There's some, there's some drug violations there, which means it was probably outside the building, I would think, unless, you know, somebody was dealing inside the building. So, you know, there is a good amount of calls being done there, and again, my my hope would be that, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but I'm not really sure where you wanna go with this issue, I guess.
And a final question, the owner said that he's installed cameras, and there haven't been any issues as far as if, you know, there's been instances that you you need to sort of see that information. Have you been able to work with the, with the owner?
Oh, he's been more than helpful, there's, there's no doubt about that. We're just dealing with, you know, some of his clientele, which he's trying to weed out, we're trying to weed out and and take steps, you know, to, I guess, to make sure that people don't hang around there. And that's gonna be incumbent upon us as well and him when the, when the weather turns better and people wanna hang out out front, and then subsequently, right there at the common, that's kinda like the little focal point, so.
Mr. Chair, I would say from, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we're, that the city and the owner are sort of moving in the right direction.
Councilor Plant?
Yes, so my, my final comment, really is a comment more than a question, is and I was beginning this earlier, Mr. Menery has a lawful business at this location. He has, he has gotten the proper permits. He has been working cooperatively with the police and the fire departments. He has things up to code, as far as I know, with inspectional services. So all that is to his credit as being a business here in the city. Having said that, I represent not only that building, but the neighborhood, and he's gonna stay there because he's lawfully there. And I will say this, I wish that it was more like five seventy-five, because as much as he believes, it's almost like a mission that he's looking to help the people who are less served, et cetera, I also have a mission, and that's to make sure the people in that surrounding area have a peaceful place to live, the people on Springfield Street, the people on Salem Street, the other people potentially who are, but South Union Street. So I also wanna make sure that, that when they go home at night, they feel safe, that they don't have to see drug activity going on there. I also don't wanna see our person, our personnel, our resources being drained. Now, I grant you that there's less of that happening, that's a good thing, and for that, I'm happy. But in the big picture, and this is more of a comment, because again, he's there lawfully, I really wish there was a different business model for that location. That would be a better fit for that neighborhood, because you know, as well as I do, do you, Mr. Chairman, that is a rough neighborhood, and people there are screaming and clamoring for for law and order, they're clamoring for peace, solitude. They just wanna go to work, they wanna come home, they wanna take care of their children. And when they see this activity going on, they see the, not so much the fire trucks so much, but more the police activity and the things that are going on over there, that does not make them feel really safe and makes them feel good. I'm, I'm glad we got a new officer on the beat, I'm glad that's there. But I just wanted, I guess I wanted to make sure you are aware, Mr. Chairman, how I feel about that. And it's not so much that I have any disrepute for Mr. Menery, but it, I think it needs to be said, at least this counselor from that area, I really wish the business model would change to help the folks that are in the surrounding parts of that, that neighborhood. I don't have jurisdiction over other parts of the city, of course.
I would just say, moving forward, we're certainly gonna hold Mr. Menery accountable and and try to work with him, but if not, we'll take the steps necessary that we need to take as well from our end.
Sure, thank you.
All right, Chief, I have a few questions there. Sure, sure, give me one second, please, I have a few questions for the chief. Chief, oh, this is more like probably for Abel Vargas, but stay right there. Director Vargas, can you take that up, please? How many, how many of these buildings do we have throughout the city?
I wouldn't be able to give you an accurate number. I mean, I I know there's, there's a decent amount of them on on Broadway, but I wouldn't be able to give you a specific number. Inspection services, monitors, and has record of all of those things, so they they would be able to provide you that information.
Probably ten, or more?
I'm not sure. I I don't think ten, maybe, I'm I'm not sure, I can't say.
Chief, do you have, do you have that, do you have that number?
We're just trying to do the, just trying to do the quick address check in in our mind, I would say right around ten. We could get you, I mean, if they couldn't provide the number, we could certainly, we have, we have the list of all the rooming houses that we run everybody's name every month to see who has warrants, so we could definitely get you a hot number if you needed it.
Basically, this is, basically, experience from, compared to others' rooming house, what do you think this is a in terms of phone calls to the police department?
Well, that's one of the bigger ones now, right?
Probably the top two.
Yeah.
Top two, the, the best, or top two of the board?
No, as far as calls for service, correct. We get more calls.
You get more calls from?
South Union Street and another location.
Because I just wanted to put together kinda like on my head, a number of phone calls throughout the city because of this type of business model that that we have in in the city of Lawrence. And looking at the amount of phone calls that we get from these specific building with seventy units, it's more than two hundred in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, all combined.
Yep.
That costs a lot of money to the city of Lawrence, every time that we need to five or six?
Yeah, I mean, just, just off the head with with Mr. McCray, I think, we, we think, not a hundred percent sure,
but there's, there's, I wanna guess five rooming houses.
Yeah, there's more than that.
There's more than more?
Some are, some are smaller, but there's the same business model to you.
Yeah, so looking at this list, obviously, we understand this is one of the most called malls. Calling is not about pain, but having issues is what we're concerned, and this is, this is problematic for the police department, because it's, it's a lot of research that go to one specific building, or seventy units. What will be not necessarily a recommendation for this type of business, but what do you think as a city we should do to have this type of situations probably improve? Not necessarily solve, but I mean, to improve.
I would just say, you you talked about it a little bit, when we talk about how much it costs to live there, these individuals generally have some sort of issue, addiction, problems, they're recovering addicts, they go back and forth from recovery. So those individuals, you know, will, will, will involve themselves in crimes, breaking into things, prostitution, drug activity, fights, domestics, those types of things. So you have that mix of clientele in there, that's why you're gonna get the higher calls for service. Moving forward, short of changing the the clientele, really, the only thing we can do is continue to document the situation, and eventually, when we go in these locations, we also, you know, get ahold of inspectional services, we do search warrants, we do get a get ahold of inspectional services to make sure everything's up to code. We try to do everything we can administratively, also, along with criminally. But in the end, I think it would be up to the board like this, or inspectional services, somewhere that can take a a hotter action in terms of administratively closing a building, or some sort of sanctions or whatever, and I think that was probably what happened at five seventy-five Common Street at one point, and then eventually it was turned over and someone bought the property and rehabbed it, but
In terms of documents, we have a lot of documentation. We have two hundred and something calls for two years. So it's more than enough. I just wondering to see how as a city we should, we should be looking into this type of business model for the, for the future, because, I mean, it is affecting that that the quality of life from many places around those places, and and it's, it's a problem.
Right, I would say, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, has it, was it recent that you went to long-term people? Were you had some weekly ones there for a while? So our experience is that when you have the weekly tenants, those are the ones you tend to have more of a problem with, they spend a week here, they don't care about the property, they cause problems, they go on to another property, and and they bounce around the city like that. People that generally tend to stay a while, don't wanna lose their housing, they generally tend to stay within the rules. So again, moving forward, my hope would be that that would be the case at seventy-seven South Union Street. I mean, all I can say is
Can you come to the mic, please?
It's, I think a lot of this is based on reputation of rooming houses, that I don't know if any of you have stepped foot in the building, but, or met any of the tenants, but a lot of the tenants are 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 nice people who really need that place, and I'm not just saying that, but it's a business model.
But let me tell you something, we have two hundred and thirty phone calls.
I understand that, but
For the police department, it's not, it's not, it is not just something that we, in our head.
But you can clean up the five seventy-five Common Street, that doesn't make South Broadway that much nice. South Broadway's still a rough neighborhood, it's, that building, you can spit shine, it doesn't mean that South Bro, you can make I don't know if you've gone up and down Springfield Street, but my building's probably the cleanest part of the entire street, so a lot of that neighborhood can blame that building, but it's not, the building's not the problem.
Do you own any other type of a
I do, I do, I own eleven properties in Lawrence, I'm born and raised in Lawrence. Yes, I own south-side apartments. Thirty-four, thirty-four unit.
Oh, you own eleven rooming houses in Lawrence?
I I own eleven properties in Lawrence.
No, I'm talking about rooming houses only.
The two biggest are are seventy-seven and eighty-six, South Broadway, yeah.
So how many of those eleven properties are rooming houses, just two or more?
Well, it's tough to define a rooming house, some are ten, ten units.
Places that you rent rooms?
Eleven.
So those elevens places you rented by rooms?
I'm sorry? Mr. Chair?
Hold on one second. You have eleven properties in Lawrence?
Correct.
Out of those eleven properties, how many of those you rented by roomed units?
All of them are rentals. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, some of them are single houses, some of, two families, three families, two ten units. South Side Apartments, this is a thirty-four unit. That, as I was gonna mention, I was born and raised in Lawrence, I still live in Lawrence. My father was in Alderman, so I I've been in city hall my whole life, so I'm proud of Lawrence. I take pride in that building, I take pride in all, all my buildings. I'm there every day. I was, I have no voice today because I was pouring acid down a toilet, because I I plunge toilets, I I mop the place, that's what I look like. So I I take offense when people, when, you know, when people are saying conditions of the building, I get defensive because I'm there every single day. You need people who own buildings and live in Lawrence and understand Lawrence. I, I understand Lawrence.
Yeah, okay, Councilor Plant, uh, Councilor Piana?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, it was just to, I think when you were asking about rooming houses, I just wanted to to ensure that we understood that the owner was saying that he has two rooming houses, and that the other properties, I guess, I guess he rents. You know, I I I think that I can completely understand the concerns. I definitely understand the concerns of the constituents, 'cause I hear them, you know, every year, while um, while, um, you know, every time that I walk around there these last couple of years, I've always talked to the neighbors, and, um, there's definitely an issue. Um, but I'm also hearing from the different departments that things, um, are improving, because before, I didn't see, um, a police presence there. Um, and I know that at least, you know, two years ago, one of the biggest concerns for, um, for the neighbors was just the response rate, um, and it sounds like that's, uh, that's been improving. Um, you know, I think at the end of the day, we, uh, you know, if we ourselves can't urge individuals to change business models, um, what we can do is do what we can to respond to these issues, to be vigilant, um, to document things, and if there were issues of, uh, you know, dealing with inspectional services, then I think at that point is, you know, when the city can, um, you know, the, the city has different tools, uh, to, um, push the owner to, you know, change, or take over the property, whatever, but it doesn't sound like at this, that we're he, that we're at that point with this property, at least nothing that's been presented to me shows me that. Um, I, I do see a lot of, um, a lot of responses from the police department, um, but I think that's a good thing. Um, you know, I, I don't know how twenty, how twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, or twenty fourteen looked like, so if, if we have more responses now than before, um...
Yeah, we did in two thousand fifteen, we have less.
So, we have less response now?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, we have more phone calls now.
More phone calls now?
I don't know how you wanted to interpret that.
So, I, I mean, yeah, you're right, and, and I think that's, um, the, the way that I was interpreting it from, from the report, uh, from the Chief of Police, was that the fact that they're more involved, the fact that they're in there more, the fact that perhaps the clientele has changed, instead of it being weekly, it's now monthly, you have more people calling. Because if there were all sort of, you know, you know, bad folks around, I doubt they'll be calling the police department to come on in. The fact that they're calling the police department, to me, you know, I'm hearing that you have more of a group there that wants things to improve in that building, and I'll say that.
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious, Andy, eighty-six South Broadway, that, that place, we don't seem to go there anywhere near as much as seventy-seven South, you're kind of the same business model, right? Why, why is that? You might want to tell, you might want to just...
Sure, it's across from Church and Fort Room, or so it's location. Uh, it's location, it's, uh, and it, it's, uh, that one, it's two floors, so it's tougher to get in the building, whereas, uh, seventy-seven has a lobby, so a lot of people are, but it's, uh, it's Springfield Street, that's where a lot of people go to get their drugs, not gonna lie. They, they, they used to come to the building for sure, the building was abandoned for many years before I bought it, so people were literally breaking in, um, to the bathrooms to, to shoot up. Um, I'm there every day, I, my first year, I was dragging them out by their ho, horse collar, they're in, with needles in their arms, it's, it's Springfield Street, um, but now I, all, all the bathrooms have coded locks, so all the females have a code, all the males have a code, uh, there's cameras right up front of them, and now they take pride of ownership in the building. So, if they're calling the police, it's because somebody's trying to get in to shoot up, so they've had it. So, if the calls go up, again, it's not because it's worse, it's because they're fin, they're s, they're finally calling the people who are trying to get in to do bad things, and they're getting rid of them, they're cleaning up themselves, they're taking pride in the building, and, um, and it took years to get there, but, um, so to me, I look at calls going up as a positive thing, because before, they wouldn't call because it was commonplace to see somebody walk in the building and walk right in a bathroom to shoot up and leave, it was, they wouldn't call the police, but now they do, it's, that, that's what the building was, and, but that was then, and this is now, and we've come a long, long way.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let this go on too much, for me anyway, too much further, so, two things, number one, um, Mr. Menery has, is riled against the item that was placed in two thousand twelve before he, he purchased the property, and by the way, Mr. Menery, when did you purchase the property?
I think thir, around, uh, two thousand fourteen, huh?
Two thousand fourteen.
Four, four years, yeah.
So, this was put on the council agenda prior to the purchase by Mr. Menery, and at that time, the word "conditions" was right. That's just a carryover, that does not necessarily reflect, this is two thousand twelve, when I put this on the agenda, and we, by our current process, we keep the name through each council, so please don't take any disrespect to the word "conditions" on there, that's the, that's why that's on there.
The, the model came up, and I have my life saved.
That's number one. Number two, I just, I just want to thank you for being here tonight, to provide your side, uh, this is tough, I mean, you've got city counselors here who are concerned, who ask tough questions, who want to see the very best for the people in that neighborhood, you've got department heads who are in here, uh, and giving you various different things, and they're putting them, um, um, they're putting a microscope, um, not only on that area, but more specifically in a property that you own. So, thank you so much for being here, being able to provide your side, some explanation, it's not easy, I respect that, um, I, and, and I, I stand by all my comments earlier, I'm not going to repeat it, but I, at the appropriate time, I wish to table this, and then maybe we can re, reconsider this again a year from now, and see how things are progressing or regressing, depending on...
Sure.
Situation, so thank you.
Yeah, sure, and, uh, before you, before you put a motion to table, we have a few other questions. Counsel LeBlanc?
Yes, um, you said that you have a people living in there for a couple of years, ten year, nine year, or whatever. Do you have a rules and regulation, uh, for those people who are living or who are renting the building?
Do I have what?
Rules and regulation.
Of course, yes, yeah, leases, yeah, everything.
So, and what do you do when those...
They're posted throughout the building, we have a, a front office, yeah, it's, it's, uh, there's a girl at the front office every day, they, you know, if anybody has a complaint, they come fill out, um, you know, repair forms, but to, to run a building of seventy-seven rooms, you know, as the police mentioned, you're going to deal with some rough people, so, and to evict them, of course, they're, they're going to go right to City Hall, they're going to make up things, they're going to, so to not have one bu, health violation or one building, that's a lot of work, because there's, I have to throw out some bad people, and, you know, they abuse the system, they go right to City Hall, so I'm, I'm, I have to make sure that, that those, the place is spotless, basically, because they do quarterly checks, um, and when the fire department goes through, they literally go in inside every room, and to make it even easier, even easier for them, I change the locks on every, you know, that costs eleven thousand dollars to change, so I can have one master key to make it easier.
Yes, I understand, I understand all of this part, but when people make it some kind of disturb, and, you know, in, in the building, in the apartment, so do you send a letter to them, do you, what kind of rules do you follow, and at the end, see they continue, like, this is the first lady, this is the second, and at the third, you know, we're going to evict you, and we're going to bring you to the...
Yeah.
So, it doesn't matter that you had everything in place, because if you all feel that your building has everything in place, like the fire lamps, and, and everything is okay, you don't have to worry about they can come into the inspection service and ask for any other inspector to go over there.
Right.
So, that's, is my question, what rule do you fa, do you follow?
What?
With that, with the tenant, when they make some kind of the store, or you have to call the police three, four times during the night?
The tenants aren't a big problem, it's, the, uh, a lot of them have been, the long-term elderly tenants, if, if they're a problem, it's, a lot of it is, uh, they get sick on the third floor, and they'll call the, the ambulance because, uh, they don't want to wait in the, in the waiting room, and that bothers me, so I, I, I drive a lot of them to, to the, um, hospital myself, I bring them all to, uh, regardless, uh...
Well, if the tenant call because they have to call the ambulance because they feel sick, it doesn't matter, it's okay, you know?
The, the tenants feel safe, I, I don't think there's...
Somebody has a, a party, and they have a party today, you have to call the police, you have to call the, the, the fire department, you have to call everybody, the resident start calling because they can't sleep during the night, so do you send a letter to the tenant, do you send something, do you follow some rules and, and...
Of course, yeah, yeah, that, I, like, the city would hear, it, I don't know if you've ever received a complaint, like a tenant not feeling safe, or the police, but, um, with the police and me there every day, the tenants feel safe, but if they, I, I don't know if I'm hearing your question probably, yeah, if, if, I, I'm, I'm at court every Thursday evicting people, if they break the rules, they're out, it's, I mean, we, we run a pretty tight ship, it's, I have a waiting list of people to try to get rooms, so there, there is a need for buildings in Lawrence for that price range, it's, um, there is a need for elderly people who aren't old enough to go into a nursing home and don't have the funds for a nursing home, there's that pocket area from fifty-five to about seventy-five, and that's the core of our tenants. I'd say the average tenant is about sixty, sixty-five years old elderly, and, um, so we're really trying to get, it's just when you start taking on more of that type of tenant, you are going to get more calls for service, because they're not as healthy, it's, so, I mean, it's catch twenty-two, we're, we're getting, to me, what I consider safer tenants, but you might get more calls. But, at least they're all in one place a, and they're being taken care of, that's all I could say, it's, and there is a need for the, this, in the city, there's a need for housing.
No, we know that is a need for housing, that's something that...
It's impossible to find, I, I probably get thirty or forty calls a day.
But that is not, yeah, no, we know about it, but my question is, what kind of rule do you follow when people, you know, do a disturb that nobody can, and they do it one, two, three times during the month, during the year, during, you know, every three or four months?
Yeah, I, I've been a landlord twenty, twenty-five years, so I've, I, you know, I'm from, I, I make sure they, you know, sign everything, and leases and the whole work, so they, they follow the rules.
All right, Counselors.
Okay, thank you.
You have more questions? Yeah, we still have inspection or service here.
You do?
Do we have, no, Dana here? All right, they were supposed to be here, Counselors?
What's, what's it say?
No, 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 yeah, yeah. Counselors, uh, we have this item, the condition of seventy-seven South Union Street, it's a rooming house, we have many rooming houses throughout the city. Uh, the way that I see this item is, is, is an item that it could be, um, it could develop a, a way of how we should be looking at this type of business, in terms of, uh, how we want to deal with it. And also, getting reports from other rooming houses from the ci, uh, from, uh, throughout the city, not only seventy-seven, uh, South Union Street. So, somehow, what we like to see in rapport, and some type of update on other properties that are similar to this one, uh, that are, uh, throughout the city. So, Counselors, can we expand this item to include other locations? That's a question for you, uh, for, for all of the Counselors, there is any thought on this? Counsel LeBlanc?
Mr. Chairman, I actually agree with, uh, with your desire to increase, uh, this review, especially on the other rooming house, which I don't even know where it is, that's on the top two. However, I, I would advise the Chair that if we're going to go in that direction, that since it is materially different than just one rooming house, you're looking at all the rooming houses, I would recommend to the Chair that we put it on the agenda as new business, have it sent down here, and then take it up as a new business, as a new item.
No problem, we, we'll, we'll, uh, do you have any thought on that?
No, Mr. Chair, I, I would concur with that statement.
Okay, so, so let's proceed with a new item, in terms of getting probably reports from other locations that are, have, um, I wouldn't say a problem, but a little bit of a challenge for the different department throughout the city of Lawrence. Um, so we'll proceed with the new item, then eventually, uh, to perhaps a new business. Uh, can I get a motion to table item two seventy-four twelve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes are good. So, continuing with the agenda.
Thank you.
We have, hold on a second, we have item seventy-six, seventy-six eighteen, is the acceptance of the deed from the, uh, canister, so, so three seventy-four South Broadway, um, lies, I send an email, if we can table that item, you just read through that email.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Continuing with the agenda, item twenty-six eighteen, this is Lawrence Public School, uh, K eight, uh, K eight enrollment projections, and plan to address the capacity issues. Uh, we have, uh, the Lawrence Public School here, and we have the order of this item, uh, Counsel Payano, uh, Counsel Payano, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you, um, and thank you, Dr. Bergeron, for being here today, and for, um, you know, uh, waiting to, to speak on this. Now, uh, for the last several months, uh, there's been several discussions around, um, uh, housing coming in, you know, coming into Lawrence, uh, and, you know, we have to, as councils, we have to make, you know, decisions around that, and one of the things that has been brought up is sort of enrollment, uh, within the, uh, the school department. I know that I received, uh, last year, um, sort of these, these, these projections, um, and a report on it, and I thought that it'd be great if the other councils as well, um, had this information.
All right, so our enrollment projections have, um, our enrollment in general has gone up about fifteen hundred students over the last six years. Um, some of that is, a lot of our families are doubling up as they're coming into the city and places to stay, they're living with family, uh, we have a lot of homeless, uh, families that are in, in housing that is not truly, um, desirable housing, you know, twelve, thirteen people living in their, their family's home, um, so we understand the need for more housing, I guess our concern goes with the fact that most of the housing is in this center part of the city, which is where I highest population of student enrollment is. Um, so we have been looking at that closely, because we do not have a lot of capacity to grow within the current buildings that we have. So, we're not, we're not against public housing, because we know we need that for our families, and we have many families who don't have a place to live, but we are worried about the enrollment numbers, based on the number of new housing coming online in the next two years, because we know, although we've started the process to build schools, those schools are not going to come online as quickly as the new housing is going to come online, and we have to find room for those students, and where many of our classrooms are already capping up at the twenty-nine, thirty range of students, because of the density of the population in, in most of our communities. Um, we're getting concerned that we're taking away a lot of spaces that we had put in place for students to have the same things that are happening in other communities, like having an art room, or having a science lab that in many places we've had to disas- disassemble so that we could actually have classrooms in those rooms, and we have got teachers who are doing the traveling on cotton routine, which is not, I mean, not desirable, I mean, as a teacher, you don't want to have to put everything on a cart and roll from class to class, when, if you had your own classroom, everything would be handy and readily available to children. So, at this point, as we look at our numbers, uh, as of this year, we're at fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six students. Ten year, fi, six years ago, we were under thirteen thousand, so we've seen a lot of new arrivals, we've taken in a hundred and sixty-eight students from the hurricane relief, in terms of students who have arrived to Lawrence, uh, as a result of Hurricane Maria. Um, those students are coming and going, depending on where they're able to find stable housing, or if they're able to move back, which is many, what many of them would like to do. We also experience a lot of children who are in foster homes, and even though they're in foster care in another community, their desire is to remain in Lawrence, and under the homeless act, they're entitled to that, allowed to stay in the city. So, we're not seeing many of our students who actually get placed in foster care outside of Lawrence wanting to relocate and go to the schools in those communities. They feel an attachment to the schools and the services they're getting here. So, we are just a little concerned about where is the capacity for us to grow, I mean, right now, we are renting a school because one of our schools had a fire, and it's, needs to be repaired, but once that school goes offline and can get back into its old building, we know we have to start staging for the construction of the Oliver School, at some point, those students are all going to have to move out of there while they build, and then following that, the same thing will happen with the Lakies, so over the next five years, we're going to have to relocate two existing buildings in order to build, to build greater capacity. So, both of the schools that we put in for are to increase enrollment in both of those places, which will ultimately address a lot of these issues in terms of the growth in this lower corridor, the central part of the city. Um, but in the meantime, we don't have a lot of space to grow, and we don't have a lot of buildings available that could readily be made into school buildings, so I think that's our concern. Um, we do know that some of these housing will alleviate possibly some of the doubling up that we're seeing. I believe we have about a hundred and ninety families, a hundred and ninety students are involved in a doubling up situation, so if those families are going to go into some of this housing, that would be wonderful, because I think we'd much be greater capacity because I think we'd much greater capacity for those families and would not impact us as greatly. But as we're seeing with just the Duck Mill opening just recently, they had seventy-three units and we've already taken in thirty-six new children since they've opened. So depending on what the, the housing is done for, if it's being done for singles or over fifty-fives versus, you know, multiple family units of, you know, three and four, two and three bedrooms versus single bedrooms. So a lot of that is things that we, we take into consideration. We don't always know what all of the design is, but we know that some of the ones that are one and two bedrooms, we're definitely seeing children arriving already.
Sure, Councilor Plant, uh, Councilor Pajano, sorry.
Thank you. So, so just, just for, for the councils, I think one of the, if you look on page seven, I mean, this is something that, you know, I've been, as a former school committee member, I would see a lot, but on page seven, you see some of the.
Hold on a second, what page?
Seven of what?
Page.
Seven of.
Oh, you guys, you guys didn't get this report? So if you look on, look on your, on the left.
Those are the only two pages I have, too, so don't steal that.
I just got two pages.
Yes, we just got.
Okay.
Oh, you're special.
Uh, maybe, maybe Teresa gave me this, so maybe I'm special.
Can you get a copy?
Yeah.
So you can, you can continue with your, with your thought before he asks your question.
Yeah, so, no, so I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll explain it. So essentially, what we're seeing is a lot of new housing, it's all around up, up Leonard, up Oliver, Tarbox.
Tarbox, Leahy, this whole central part of the city.
So this, you know, all this area and in the document that they're making copies of, you'll see that most of the, like, those are the, some of the school buildings that right now are up to capacity. So, you know, pretty much all these buildings are up to capacity. So I think it's one of these things that we just need to take into account. And it's also sort of an urge to ensure that we're creating plans to enlarge or, you know, expand some, some of these schools. Because right now, if, if, when you look at the graph, you just see that enrollment is going up and since we're a, a very young community, it doesn't look like that's going to go down at all, it's just going to keep going up. So, so I think it's important information for us to, to know about, especially when we are thinking about that a lot of, you know, when we're talking to parents, one of the things they talk about is class sizes.
And we know that in, in this particular area, the capacity is so tight because you have so many multifamily homes in this, this, these neighborhoods in the north central part of the city. So we, we, we do get concerned, we want to have class sizes that are reasonable. We understand the needs of our children are great and the more children in our classroom, the harder it is to necessarily get everything done that you want to get done and make sure everybody's learning as you want them to learn. So I think that's what, where our concerns lie in and not that we don't want housing, but we want to kind of have a pacing that allows us to keep up with it and be able to expand at that same capacity.
So, Councilor Plant?
I, I, I'm just glad that my colleague from Havel Street is, is talking about this because I've been talking about this for a couple of years now and it's good to have another ally who sees that, I think, through a similar prism as I do, which is the rate of growth of new housing is, we're not able to, I'm sorry, the rate of growth of the number of new students. We're not able to meet that with the current school structures. One of the things that we, we're hoping and our fingers are crossed that if with the new housing units, that we will have less couch, couch surfing, less people commingled and they'll go in there. But there's no guarantee that even if we do that, that that'll take place because once you already have a unit that's already been configured, et cetera, to have more people, that is already conditioned to have that, there is just as much a chance that you will see a continuation at that property as there is that that will be eliminated by, by essentially diffusing or bringing individuals from that crowded situation to another situation where it's far more desirable, right? So as we go through this process, I, unfortunately, the, the barn door has swung wide open. We have over a thousand new units that are, that have been, are going to be placed in here, and now we are already stuck. I say stuck because we as a city now have to figure, find an answer to the question, where do the kids go to school? And that is a problem, that is a multi-million dollar question and a multi-million dollar answer. And unfortunately, for whatever reason, we did not have the proper checks to make sure that we had these conditions set up at wherever those valves are, those check marks are, at various levels of government, right? So I, I wanted to say that. I also wanted, just to bring some historical context real briefly, we actually had in our city far more people a hundred years ago. We were very close to having a hundred thousand people here in this city, right? Somehow we managed, and I think part of the answer, and we can't legislate this with government, but there, people saying, well, why do we have a problem today? Why didn't we have that problem at that? Well, first of all, we had probably a bigger, a bigger classroom sizes back then, number one. But number two, we also had a very vibrant and strong parochial school system in the city. St. Anne, Sacred Heart, Holy Trinity, St. Francis, we had St. Augustine's, we had
We had about ten.
this amazing situation where it wasn't the taxpayers that had to pay because they were sending, we were sending our children to these parochial schools and it was essentially the churches that were picking up this back in the time. So that has somewhat been eliminated. Yes, there've been Bellicini and some other, other groups coming in, but nowhere near the same extent as we've had back for some time. So when people start looking for some answers or some questions, there are some fundamental changes that have taken place in our city in the last hundred years, fifty years, even fifty, even thirty years even. So we, and, and then we're not able as a city to match that. And, and now because we're so landlocked, it's going to be expensive to try to find new places to build new structures. And then when we build new structures, it's, things off the tax rolls and then we're going down this, we're going down this loop. How are we, we have more people, less tax income coming in, and how are we going to provide the police, the fire and all the other services that our citizens demand of us? So just context, I guess, and I want to thank my, my colleague from Havel Street for, for bringing this back up. This is going to be an ongoing discussion because we're going to be seeing more opportunities and more other, other things coming up for people to say, we need more of this and more of that. And I'm going to hearken back to this discussion to my friend from, my friend from Havel Street as far as how we're going to be dealing with this when we have other requests for more housing. Thank you.
There you go, Councilor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think, and thank you, Councilor Plant. And just even to, to add more to that, I think what, what this is showing is that their, their concern is right now. So it's not even about additional housing, it's just about the housing that we have now. So I think one of the things that we need to, you know, perhaps push is push on, you know, the, the city administration to ensure that, you know, I, I know that they, we're, we're thinking about the second school? I think we, we put something in, what was that school?
The Leahy's on, on route for the next round, yes.
Okay, and we got to figure out what the third school is, you know, as well, because we, we got to, you know, kind of move on that as well. Because I'm, I'm looking at.
We built four schools in like the two thousand to two thousand and seven range, and they're already in capacity, so.
And just looking at the, the document that was in front of you, the two-page document, you, we, we see the class sizes for some are at twenty-seven, twenty-nine, is that?
Correct.
That is, you know, that's insane. You know, like, I remember when I was a kid, I thought it was a lot and I think it was like twenty-four. So the fact that, and, you know, you might think that from twenty-four to twenty-nine, five kids is not a big difference, but when you're a teacher, you know, two extra students or even one extra student makes a whole lot of difference. So, thank you, Councilor Plant, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
There's any other questions for the, for the, for the, for questions? Well, I would like to take the floor and, and say thank you to the Lawrence Police, the Lawrence School Department for.
We thank the police, too, that's okay.
The Lawrence School Department for being here tonight and actually provide us with that and so much needed report in terms of that enrollment. Thank you, Mr. Pajano.
Thank you, Dr. Burdron.
For putting this up on the agenda and clarify us in terms of what's the real meaning of the enrollment of the city of Lawrence. Councilors, what do you like to see with this item?
I, I, I mean, I, I think we could, you know, move it, move it up and just, just give it a, just a, like a, what do you call it? The regular recommendation, like the.
Committee report.
Yeah.
Committee report.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a motion to send it to the full council as a committee report.
That a recommendation, I make, I, I make that motion.
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So the, do the school department have to be there on, on next Tuesday with us?
I, I, I don't, I don't think they do.
But I, I guess that could be more better for any question.
So, so let's ask Dr. Burdron.
Councilor Pajano.
Can you also repeat the motion?
I think.
Yes.
Um, Dr. Burdron, would you be available to make a, to be in front of the city council at our, our next meeting to, to give the full council a report?
When's the next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Um, I won't know until after school committee tomorrow night because we have a potential workshop that evening, so. But I'm sure I could send somebody.
Yes, you or somebody that represent the school department.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continue with the agenda, we have.
Did we vote on that?
So you want, you got it?
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item thirty-one, I think, is the removal of deed. Can I get a, a motion to take item thirty-one, anything out of the table matters? It is the removal of deed restriction.
Some, some vote?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have this item in front of us to he, today here. This is the removal of the restrictions for the location. This is for thirty Midland Street. The property was sold by the city of Lawrence and it was sold by the city of Lawrence for about five thousand dollars. And you have a specific restriction that, it says that the use of the land should be restricted to yard area and accessories used to the buyer's property at twenty-eight Midland Street and should not build upon. So the person in front of us here today is looking forward to have that restriction removed and it have to be, that have to be done by the city council because the city council back then, when the property was sold, it was approved by the city councilors, by the city council. So, councilors, we have Mr. McCarthy from the planning department as well today to discuss this item. There is any question for either one of them? Councilor Plant?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mr. McCarthy kind of set the table, kind of bring us to where we are right now and the, the rationale behind the vote that you're recommending that we take tonight.
Well, I was asked to do a letter for, on the reasons why this, this might be a beneficial proposal. This actually came before the zoning board and it wasn't until late in our discussion that we discovered that there's a deed condition on the property. At the time, if you read my decision, we, we actually had asked them to have it withdrawn and the deed condition be taken care, taken care of first. But it did go through the motion, through, through the entire hearing and the ZBA did vote in favor of giving a permit to build a single-family home on this property. The property in question was actually a sixty-four hundred square foot lot. There was also a single-family home on a thirty-six hundred square foot lot. Mr. Almazar bought the single-family home and the, and the sixty-four hundred square foot lot. And my, my advice, at the time, he wanted to build a two-family house on the sixty-four hundred square feet. My advice was that the lot be split evenly, forty-eight hundred square feet for each property, the single-family home be rehabbed and a new single-family home be built, more in style with the surrounding properties. There's a site plan in there showing the house that's to be built in a site plan, it's a very modest, single-family home. About seven, six or seven people from the neighborhood showed up. They were all universally opposed to the two-family home. They're mostly all somewhat favorable to a single-family home, depending on the size and scope of the home. And that's what, and so that was what, based upon the hearings, the neighborhood's input and the city's need for housing, especially of the single-family type, family housing. The recommendation from the ZBA was to grant the variances necessary to subdivide and build a single-family home. One of the reasons, I'm usually very strict on these deed restrictions because a lot of times people get these at a very, a very favorable rate. But Mr. Almazar is not the person who profited from this. Actually, if you look at my letter, this property changed, changed four times before he purchased in two thousand and seventeen. The deed restriction's over twenty years old. So this is, so it's not a situation where he's picking up a piece of property for, for very cheap with a promise that he'll keep it open space and turning it over. He purchased this package as a whole on the open market with an eye towards developing this. So in this, in, again, I don't have a interest in this property except far from the, what the planning department sees as some of the needs in the city and how this will fit in that neighborhood. The considerations we were with about the design, saving trees on the property and Mr. Almazar indicated that he'd be willing to work with the neighbors as far as landscaping, design, anything else that goes. So we are satisfied with that. So that's, that was the recommendation. That was the vote of the board, was to grant the variances. And it's all conditioned upon having this, of course, having this condition removed. It was a city council condition, so it needs your vote to remove it.
My first, my first question, the date of the memo, is it truly May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen? Or was there a different date for that memo? The memo date that was given to the chairman from you was May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, is that a typo?
Yes, two thousand.
What's the proper date?
That's a typo.
I just want to make sure we're talking about something that's current, so this is, this is a memo that was drafted to us by when?
Yeah, where that date came from, but it was, I sent this, I think I sent the original package over, originally did this in February.
February two thousand and eighteen?
I thought we were on for February twenty-seventh, not March twenty-seventh originally.
February two thousand and eighteen.
Eighteen, yes.
So just so I'm clear, so.
You can see the, the, the ZBA decision is January two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, so I just want, so does that need to be clarified? So, just so I'm clear, so what we're talking about here is a deed restriction, this council put it on, looking to remove the deed restriction. The purpose for removing the deed restriction is right now, the deed restriction says there can't be a structure being built on there and the applicant wants to be able to build a, he initially wanted to build a two-family, now he wants to build a one-single-family there?
Yes.
One-single-family there. But he needs a, a variance from the zoning board because these, he has an undersized parcel.
That's correct.
How am I doing so far, pretty good?
That's correct.
Am I understanding it correctly? Okay, so, and, and people came to the zoning board and for the most part were opposed to the double, the two-family and begrudgingly were less, a little more ambivalent or less opposed to the single-family? Is that, so far, is that my understanding, is that what you're representing?
I, I think for the most part, they all said they would be, that a single-family would be appropriate.
So, so this is, so, Mr. Chairman, this is an interesting discussion. On the heels of the last discussion, the previous matter, and the other matter, we talked about significant buildings, right? We're talking about larger buildings throughout the city being transitioned into, what was once mill buildings now into residential units, right? That is one factor to the growth in the city. The other factor to the growth of the city is what's happening in these very small pockets throughout. What was once a single-family could be a multifamily. Variance of, pieces of property that were undersized are now being asked to, let's say, get a variance and build on it. It's one here, two here, one here, one here, and it's going throughout the city. So while I think having a single-family is probably better than having a multifamily for various reasons, where again, adding growth, this, however, in this case, far more incrementally, far smaller. But as the zoning board has to deal with this and wrestles with this, when I go and I talk to the zoning board and I make my reservations known for these ones and twos, you get a one here and a two here, before you know it, you start having a critical mass. And that is what's happened in the city. Now, I know the administration is looking and focusing on infield projects. I don't have as much of a problem if a house burns down and a parcel, we want to rebuild something that's there already, that's already been, kind of been spoken for, that makes some sense to me. But when we start adding more, in this case, we're adding more, and I realize there's only one single-family housing. To me, I, I try to argue, and I, I'm interested in finding an argument on the other side, is how do we remain consistent with? with adding this one? A good man, probably works very hard, probably has a family, right? Probably has invested and has probably done tremendous things in our community. Don't know Mr. Almazar, but, but.
Works sixty hours a week fixing buildings.
Works hard, right? This is part of the American dream, he's working hard, he's making things, you look, through you, do you own a house right now?
Yes.
You do, but you're looking to build something, is this an investment property for you, or you want to move in here?
Most likely, there's going to be a family member moving into the house.
So you're building a house for a family member, what's wrong with that? I mean, that's great, isn't it? I mean, we're trying to help our family out, we don't want them couch surfing, we want to build something. But that's just the tug that our friends in the zoning board have to deal with whenever there's a variance. That everybody's got a great story with respect to that, and then we start, because we feel bad and we want to see this happen, we start going down this road. My question then is, do we ever say no? Do we always say yes? I'll, I'll wait to listen to the rest of the debate, thank you.
Councilor Biana?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think I, I understand the concerns of, of Councilor LaPlante. I would say there's a huge difference between, you know, a seventy unit and, you know, adding a one unit. Normally, I'm not someone that, you know, I, I definitely believe that getting rid of lawns, you know, I, I think that we should have more properties that have lawn space. In this particular case, what I'm hearing is that the neighbors didn't want a two-family. They, they would rather it be subdivided and have, and have two one-families there, which I, I don't quite understand, but that's what the, the neighbors would like. Am I right in, in, is that correct?
Well, as, as, for, from a constructive perspective, he could, he's within his rights right now. He could tear down the single, which is an old building, and construct a new two-family without having to get any relief at all, other than this condition on the property.
Right.
He wouldn't even have to go to the boards.
So, so he's choosing not, you know, like he can just do the two-family on his own. The neighbors would not like that two-family, so instead, he's looking to subdivide the property and sort of appeal to their, to their wishes and do, you know, two separate, so, so not do two, because he has that one family and then that other property, he would just do a one-unit. Now, my question is, so when the restriction was placed twenty years ago, or twenty-two years ago, why was that, do you know why that restriction was put in there?
I wasn't here then, but I assume it was because the person who bought it just wanted to keep it for open space and there wasn't an issue about it. It wasn't, it was purchased at a fairly low amount, I'm not sure, a couple thousand dollars. As I said, it's passed, the, the property's passed hands several times, he's the fourth person to own it since then. In the meantime, the lot, the, the city-owned lot has become overgrown and date, it wasn't being used as yard. It's mainly, right now, it's a very thick wooded lot and, and that kind of sticks out in the neighborhood.
You know, and I, I think that there's definitely an issue around policy when it comes to this. I don't think we're necessarily consistent, at least our message isn't consistent. And I think that's maybe something that we should work on, I don't know how, you know, that could be done, but I definitely see that, you know, in certain parts of, you know, in the city, there are some people that are able to sort of subdivide their property and create, you know, whatever it is that they want, others that, that aren't. And I think that there, there should be consistency. But at the moment, what, what we have is that we don't have those policies in place and we were, we have someone that's trying to do the right thing and we have someone that could do a two-family and instead he's choosing not to and do what the neighbors want. So I, I think I would be in favor of this.
We'd like to ask a few questions. So currently in the city of Lawrence, we have three different ways to acquire a property, a piece of land. Currently in the city of Lawrence, we have a few different ways to acquire a piece of land.
Correct.
One of them is a yard sale.
That's correct.
And another one.
This actually, this, this was done, it looks like a yard sale, but this predates our yard sale program.
It's actually below the, the rate that we actually charge for a yard sale.
I, I don't know what they called it back to twenty years ago, but it's, it looks, it's, it's a similar type of idea.
So let's, assuming that this is kind of something close to what we have currently, which is the yard sale. On, on the yard sale program we have in the city of Lawrence, we have those type of restrictions that we have here. And, and what I'm basically don't like to see is people that take advantage of that program because they have enough land now because we have a, 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 a peer board that actually provide those variances and permits to, for those people to come over. We have seen those here already, probably two to three times, coming over here, asking for those restrictions to be removed. And if we just do it for one time, everybody's going to come over to, to discuss the same situation because it's, it's, it's beautiful to build a house there, we need it. But what we don't see is that when we use that yard sale program, we actually charging a dollar square foot per, a dollar square foot to that person. This is actually less, five thousand dollars, six thousand four hundred square foot. So basically, when, I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is the case because obviously he's the fourth owner of that property, he's not, after those restrictions went through. But I mean, what we, what we're going to see eventually, if this is going through, is that people says, okay, I have the right to, to do this and so forth and so on. What I'm seeing here is, is, is most likely, is a money issue. If we have the same lot today, six hundred, and a six thousand four hundred square feet on the market today, that lot will call, well, the city will sell that lot, not for five thousand like we, like they did back then, who knows when it was, what was the year?
It was twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, now it would cost fifty thousand, sixty thousand, probably more. I have seen, I've seen an offer here in front of us for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of one similar lot.
I agree.
And, and this is basically the issue. A lot of people see the value now on, on those type of, of piece of lands that before it wasn't there. So that's, that's a situation that we need to deal with. And my question is simple. I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask this gentleman in front of me to pay sixty thousand dollars for me to change my boat, no, of course not. But somehow, a difference in terms of money, to take that restriction and put us on the same position of back ten, twenty years ago have to happen. Perhaps a price change got to happen. So it is a wage for us to do that? No, because we cannot go back and, 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 and take the, the property back and therefore sell it with our restriction. So it is a very difficult situation that we have in front of us. It is, it could be, there is a way to get, get rid of those restrictions and put in the city, put in the city in a fair location in terms of what we lost back then and what we losing today if we take those restrictions out? I think that we should, we should open that conversation. I'm not, I'm denial that we should talk about that, but in the meantime, I'm going to have to, you know, reserve myself and protect the city in terms of those restrictions because back then, twenty years ago, those restrictions were there for a reason.
Well, there's, because it's twenty years ago, there's really no way for me to go back and say why this person sold the land at the time, for what price it was done. But the facts of the case are, the person who did purchase it had a very, a house that was over a hundred years old. That house, in the past twenty years, has got very little attention and it's fallen to the disrepair. Mr. Almazar purchased that home to repair that as well as looking at the land, which I described to you earlier as being basically an overgrown wooded lot. It's not being used for yard, it hasn't been used for open space, wasn't used for excess parking. It looks like the person who owned it purchased the land and just kept it as it is. My understanding was that the person who purchased was an older, an older person. It's gone through, as I said, several hands since then and no one else has made any, taken any time to improve that property. The tree, the trees that are on it are all at least fifteen to twenty years old. They're all saplings, it's very thick. So I can understand what your position is as far as, and I, and I would take the same position as you if this was a property where somebody purchased several years ago and now is looking to profit off it by, by, after promising to keep it as open space. But I don't think that's the situation here and.
Just to, just to finalize my thought, we have similar items back then from a year ago, actually, a year and a week, that we were dealing with this situation since then. Somebody purchased a property, went through, it was another owner prior to that person and heritage the land and now want to remove those restrictions away and be able to build. It is, it is a difficult situation because at the end of the day, like, most of the time, the city take the loss. And, and we need to understand that if we keep on doing these type of things, we're going to, we're going to.
Well, I don't understand how the city's taking a loss in this.
I mean, the city's going to gain now, you know, permanent fee.
No, I'm not talking about your project, I'm talking about what happened twenty years ago with those restrictions, not only charging five thousand dollars for that, for that, for that piece of land.
But your question, your question, a decision that was made twenty years ago. I mean, the fact is, we can't go back and say that, that deal twenty years ago was a, was a poor sale.
How much it was, you know?
And we shouldn't, and it would be nice if the city had it back. I'd, I'd love to have several properties like that, I could sell those all day and, and give a significant contribution to the city budget. But those aren't the facts we have before us.
Mr. Chair?
Councilor LaPlante?
So, so I, I think, I, I understand the statement from, from Mr. Chair. I think one of the reasons that I was asking why the restriction was put in place was to see if it was, you know, something more than they got it from the city, like if there was like, like a bigger reason to that, so we can make sure that that reason is protected. If the issue is that they got it for five thousand dollars, it does sound cheap compared to our prices now. But in nineteen ninety-six, you know, houses were going, you know, like three families were going for like.
Two thousand ninety-six? Ninety-six, ninety-six, twenty years ago.
Yeah, so, you know, three families were going for, for a lot cheaper than they are now.
Yes, just a point of, just a quick information here. We're dealing with the property located at twenty-eight Midland Street. Twenty-eight Midland Street. The reason that I'm saying this is because we got a few phone calls, people that wondering to know where's the address of the location. Twenty-eight Midland Street.
Twenty-eight Midland, yes.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, so it's, so it's twenty-eight Midland Street, it used to be, so the, the second piece of, the second part of the lot, it sounds like was thirty Midland Street and then it was just, it was, it was combined. So, Mr. McCarthy, if, let's say, Mr. Almazar is not able to get the restriction taken off, is he able to, to build a two-family in that property? He is not?
He's not.
Okay, why isn't he able to build a two-family?
Why is he?
Oh, no, no, so I'm saying, not in the second lot, but in that, that first lot, is he able to sort of basically revamp that one-family and, and make it into a two-family?
He cannot.
He cannot, why?
Because he doesn't, because he's taking part of the land from that property and submitted to it, but he's still short two hundred feet to make it a bill, the bill of a lot. To have it, to have a settled on single lot, you have to have at least five thousand square feet. So he's going to have at a, at a, at a maximum forty-eight hundred. So it's two hundred feet short of being a state legal settled on lot. And it is actually even shorter than that under the, the local ordinance for that. I think we need seven thousand in that neighborhood, because it's residential two.
You can take the mic.
The old house, you're right, you're talking about the old house, could that be converted to a two-family?
Right, so, so you have.
And I, I shouldn't say no, because he could go back to the zoning board and ask them for that relief. But again, I don't think that, I don't think the board would grant it based upon the, the conversations we had at the last meeting, they.
Just, just to clarify, he have a, a, a house right there now, right next to it is an entalade.
Correct.
That house could be converted to two-family without him going to the, to the zoning board because it's by right, because of the zone that he's living in.
If he did not build a single, correct.
Yes, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting like two differing responses now.
No, I think, so if, if the existing structure were to stay as is and there would be no additional construction, that existing structure could be converted into a two-family.
The two-family.
By right, and/or he could tear that building down and build a two, a new two-family. But if he were to build that second single-family, the, the single-family that's there currently will not meet the mentioned requirement and will require more relief of the zoning board.
Thank, thank you, Director Vargas, so that, so that was my, my, my point. So it sounds like what we're, I think, one of the, my motivating factors is that we're hearing from the neighbors in that area that they don't want a two-family house, which he can do. What they want is two one-family houses. Mr. Almazar is coming here and in respect of those neighbors and kind of doing all this follow-up work. I know, I've seen him from, from January, he's been coming to all the city council meetings, I don't know why. You know, someone keeps telling him that they're, that his item is, is going to be brought up and I've, you know, so I've seen him here a lot and I know that he, he's trying to do the right thing. If, if we don't change the restriction, I think what he's going to do, he's going to go back, he's going to build this two-family house, which he can. And we're going to have a lot of neighbors that aren't happy with that decision because they were looking for something else. Now, so, so I just want to make sure that, that we, that we, we understand that part because this restriction, at least for, for this particular property, the, the, the money difference, I don't think, I don't think is a make it or break it for us, for, for, for me at least. I think, you know, one of the things that we need to take into account the most is sort of the, the neighborhood and what the residents or our constituents think about this particular issue from that area.
Councilor LaPlante?
Yeah, so real quick, thank you, so, well, we don't, well, we, there, there's been a statement already that the neighbors would, neighbors would prefer a single-family over a two-family. It's probably true. What we don't know is whether neighbors prefer nothing over what's currently there.
I, I have spoken, I, I've, I've been speaking with some of the neighbors all the time. I did advise them of this meeting to the next date and I probably will talk to them after this meeting, advise them if you go up to the full council if they do want to speak on it. The overriding issue for all the people who lived in that neighborhood was the difference between having a rental and having an owner occupied, that they presumed that if a single-family home, in, in the planning department, they also presume, a single-family home will be owner-occupied and a family will live there. Whereas a two-family, there are at least one, maybe both, maybe rentals. And that is.
Thank you for the explanation and, and if this gets sent up, I am eager to hear what the neighbors have to say. But I'll, another presumption that, I mean, I've seen in my neighborhood where houses are being rented, so, single-family houses and just the way, just the way it is, right? The market is what the market is and so that's a presumption that I wouldn't put a lot of stock into because it happens. The, the last point, and I really don't know how I'm putting on this yet. The last point is, we talked about the money factor, five thousand back in twenty-two years ago. And while it's true that, while it's true that the, that the markets changed dramatically and, and, and the petitioner here is four times removed or three times removed from that original council approval back in nineteen ninety-six. The fact is, is, is when that, when this parcel was purchased most recently, I am presuming again that a factor for the price was the fact that we had this restriction in there. This deed restriction, it would make sense, probably devalues the property. Why? Because that you, the buyer has less opportunity to do something with it, therefore the value is reduced. So the argument can be made that the purchaser purchased it on a pretty significant deal because the value was rather reduced. And now upon the purchase, now upon potential action by this council lifting that restriction, this parcel now becomes extremely more valuable because now there's going to be an opportunity to do that. Now, I'm not saying that's good or bad or indifferent, this is, this is a. Uh, this is, this is a great country, we make investments all the time. Uh, people can make money different ways. Real estate is a very prime way to make money and to increase value and to create wealth in our country, right? So, it's a good thing. Um, but I just wanna make sure that we are cognizant of the fact that there was potentially a very good purchase price for this property, uh, that's now going to be placed differently. And the people that are our forefathers, our predecessors, had a reason, that we don't quite really know why, but they decided they wanted to make this. Maybe it was the neighbors at that time, who knows why, they put that restriction in there. And we don't have that ability to go back twenty-two years. It was three years before I started serving on the council, two years, no, one year before I started serving on the council. So, I don't remember, I wasn't there for the vote. So, um, so anyway, I just wanna throw that out there, and I don't know how I'm going with it. I might actually make a motion to send it up at some point without a recommendation, if that's the way we're going. I don't feel comfortable voting in favor of it.
So, there is, uh, there is a possibility that we can, uh, to clarify if this is... This is something that's gonna come up, and we already have it on the council. So, this is something that we should kinda like create a policy on how we're gonna proceed with this. Uh, what I'm concerned is, uh, my concerns are the same. The only thing that I would like to see is the record from barely twenty, twenty, from nineteen ninety-six, to see if we find anything on this specific, uh, property. And that way, it's gonna guide us to, uh, make a, a proper recommendation to the full council. So, my preference will be to, uh, keep it up here and to do the homework that we are supposed to do, and, uh, and investigate a little more on those restrictions. Otherwise, we just take, uh, uh, if we just take the approach of sending it, take the restriction out, we are definitely gonna have, uh, to deal with the same situation over and over. And, uh, we are gonna expect different result, but that's not gonna be the case. Um, so, councilors, if you guys prefer, uh, we can do a lot, or we can do a little bit more research in terms of what happened, why they have those restrictions on there back twenty years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, based on your recommendation, I would recommend that we get the minutes from the, from that meeting back in nineteen ninety-six, if we have them, to provide some insights from both that meeting and maybe the housing committee meeting at the time that provided that. That way, we have some historical context as to why that was placed there. Not sure how, what that's gonna shed, but I think it's a legitimate and reasonable part of the research, so we understand why our predecessor did what they did back in ninety-six.
They wanted to make that as a form of a motion.
So, um, so you're essentially asking to table this, and so, if you want that motion, I'll make it. Motion to table and make the request that we...
I mean, you want to make the request as, as a form of a motion, that way we can send it to either the city clerk or our secretary.
We could certainly ask the city clerk just to provide this, the minutes from that meeting back in two thousand, nineteen ninety-six. I can make that part of the motion to table. Included in it.
Mr. Chair.
I gotta, I gotta, I've been holding on for this house almost for a year. My best friend, Mom, is moving into the house this weekend. Now, they, they wanna, they're purchasing the house. It was supposed to close, you know, this Friday. You know, the lot got subdivided. What can I do to make, you know, I've been, we've put her off, put her off, put her off into this, you know...
This is the first time whether we discuss this item here on this level.
Or, you know, uh, last time it came with a different name, that's why it wasn't heard of me, for me.
Oh, so, so this is the first time that we actually saw this, this item?
Yeah, the first time you guys heard it, but they keep sending me, that's why I keep coming.
And we need to, we need to do the proper job, um, as, 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 as councilors. I mean, uh, I, I understand the situation, I, and, and I feel bad about it, but I mean, we, we have to do something here at this level.
Yeah, no, I, I understand you guys have a job, you know. What I'm trying to say, you know, if, if, if I go ahead and, and sell this property, can I just give him, you know, where's, whatever you guys came out, you know, the next meeting?
We're still doing research, and at this point, we're still keeping it here if that's the case. We don't know yet, we haven't taken a vote, uh, in terms of either keeping it here or send it over.
Okay.
And, uh, you're in the process of doing that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a question for you.
Uh, sure.
So, uh, is, is just, um, once you get the minutes, uh, would you be able to make a, a determination with a positive or negative? Because I think, you know, if the question is just... If the question is just the minutes, we could, we could get that information by the next council meeting.
Uh, my question is in regards of seeing what that our predecessors did back then, to, and to twenty years ago. And based on that, take a determination at this council and be able to recommend the full council, a proper, uh, proper decision in terms of what we have done. The job that have gotta be done here, we don't know what happened back then, we don't know what is going to happen in the future, but I'm saying, those restrictions are not just this specific case. It, we, we have to deal with this type of situation over and over and over, once after the other one, after the other one, and we need to take a stance in terms of how we're gonna be taking those restrictions off, based on, you know, we need to... The easiest thing to do is just to look at what happened, uh, when those restrictions were, were put in, before we take any of them, to understand what, what was going on back then. We don't know, probably, probably the restrictions of that, of the upset were a lot more restrict, or probably something else in terms of the construction code. Uh, I doubt it, but I mean, it, it, it was there for a reason. We're just wondering to know why, and, uh, and that gotta be done at this level.
I, I, I guess, Mr. Chair, is I, I, I don't see, uh, the difference, um, in reading that report, you know, two, four weeks from now, and reading, and getting that. I'm sure we can get that report before the next council meeting, no problem. So, I mean, so that, that, that's my take on it, um, but I know we haven't voted on it, so, it's... The mafia's in, right?
There is a motion to table. You have a motion to table?
I, I already, I made the motion, yeah.
I second.
All right, all lots and favors to, to table. What's your motion?
And also get the...
And also get the report.
Get the report.
All lots and favor please, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Any opposed?
Roll call please. Council of Vayana?
No.
Council of Plant?
Yes.
Council of Levy?
Yes.
Uh, and I put yes. All right, the motion is, it has been tabled, so we're gonna be, um, contacting you for the next meeting, and probably we're gonna have a better, better answer for you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
May I ask Mr. McCarthy, through you, would it be, do you have communication with the neighbors at all?
Yeah.
It, it, it would be helpful if, if they would be informed at our, that we're having a meeting on this, and just to get their input, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. McCarthy, just one thing. I think one of the things that we need to make sure that doesn't happen is I know this gentleman has been coming to, you know, that there was once that I saw, I was walking through the street, and he was waiting outside for this meeting, and I had to tell him, "Hey, we, we don't meet until two weeks from now." So, I don't know who's giving him, um, the information about what meeting to attend. Um, but we need to make sure that that part is cleared up. That way, we don't have our, you know, residents waiting three months, uh, to see us. Um, and I think if, if, um, if we would've saw him two months ago, then you, you wouldn't feel pressure on a deadline. So, we need to figure out what exactly went on, um, make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, Mr. Almazar did take the initiative to put this on the schedules himself, and, uh, he asked me later to just, um, get him a letter of support, so that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, boss.
Uh, we have, um, two items on the, on the agenda. Item sixty-one, sixty-seventeen and sixty-one seventeen, uh, it is the disposition of three seventy Essex Street. Uh, can I get a motion to take those two items as a package, as a block, and out of table matters?
So, move.
Second.
All lots and favor please, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, we have the disposition of three seventy and three seventy-two Essex Street. Uh, we have, um, Director Vargas here from the planning department. So, we've been actually discussing this item for, for quite some time now, uh, probably a month. And we, we are getting some more information today. Um, so, Director Vargas, name address for the record, please.
Um, Abel Vargas, Sixth and Havil Street, in the City of Lawrence. Thank you, councilors, for, for having me again for this board. As, as you all know, we had prior conversations about the disposition of two parcels on Essex Street, three seventy Essex Street and three seventy-two. One, of course, is a five-story building, about nineteen, actually almost twenty thousand square feet, and a vacant parcel somewhere around eight thousand square feet. There have been multiple questions about, um, you know, whether or not this is the appropriate type of development. Um, there has been questions in terms of, of, is this the right developer? Um, and there have been other questions such as, as the, the pace of development, the, the school system, other services, um, as well as parking. So, I, I, you know, we, you know, we, um, you know, it was, and it was great to, to have, um, Dr. Bergeron here before you earlier, because I think it sets, it sets the framework to some of our challenges, but also, um, some of our, our, some, the fact that we have to be responsive to conditions on the ground. Uh, before you, you have two different documents that we did, we did an analysis. Uh, and we have, um, director, community development director, Vilma Martinez Dominguez here as well, that could, that, that was, is gonna come up in a few minutes to talk about some of these things. But I think, I think what we wanted to show with these two documents is, one, there is housing development happening in the city, um, at a pace that's quicker than we've had in prior years. I think a big part of that isn't necessarily policy, I think the biggest part of that is market. And we have a market that's responding to a demand, and the mar, uh, the market is responding to demand and producing units at a pace that they're producing it at. Um, that's this, that's this document here, you could see. So, you could see that by two thousand, by the end of two thousand and twenty, there will, since two thousand and fourteen, there will be almost sixteen hundred units of housing coming online. They vary on how, of market and affordable. Some stuff is in, in the, in the neighborhood, some stuff is in downtown, some stuff is in South Lawrence, some stuff is in North Lawrence. The other document before you, which, um, this, uh, community development director could speak in more detail, is a report on, um, a thirty-day snapshot of, of things that, or, or properties that were advertised in the market. And the reason why we created this was to give members of the council perspective of what the current conditions are in terms of affordability. Um, and, and so, as, as you look at, where it says data collected from FTHB, that's first-time homebuyer, that's a program that the community development funds, um, local investors, these are people that have, um, large number of units, and they've been in the city for a long time. Online sources, they vary from different websites, Facebook and MLS. These are all sources of information for, for rental units. So, that gives us some perspective of what the price points are. That's important, because we have before us a developer that knows that and understands the limitations or, or the, the, how motivated, um, for-profit developers would be to create housing at a more affordable rate, and that's reflected in these numbers here. The other thing that was noted today was that there are, and actually, I'll have no...
Good evening, councilors.
Yes, Damon Adams.
Vilma Martinez Dominguez, seventy-one East Pleasant Street, Lawrence.
Thank you.
And so, um, when I speak, I'm gonna talk mostly about housing affordability gap, which is what I was really, um, asked to do, primarily just to justify the reason and the need for this affordable housing and to really clarify what affordability means. But, um, one of the things that we're seeing, and it's that double-up housing is really not capture. It's very difficult to capture, maybe if I, I was to reach out to the Lawrence Housing Authority and the applicants that are going in, um, they could probably have a sense of what that is, that number is, but there is no way they're capturing this. And it's no longer considered, uh, a condition for emergency housing. It's almost becoming the status quo. One number that I did take, and, um, Dr. Bergeron, uh, made reference to it, is the number of homeless, um, students in the school department, Lawrence Public Schools. And there's two hundred, and this information just came in yesterday from understaff at the, um, Family Resource Center. Um, there's two hundred and seventy homeless students that are here, uh, attending schools, and seventy-five percent of that number, it's living in double-up housing. Initially, I thought that that number probably, um, was impacted, and it was, uh, by the evacuees, uh, from Hurricane Maria. Uh, but the truth is that a hundred and eighteen of those two hundred and two are not evacuees. So, this is students that are here now that are homeless and are living in a double-up housing. So, that's one of the numbers. But talking about affordable housing, um, really what is affordable housing? When you look at affordable housing, you're looking at, um, at, at people, housing units that are affordable to people that live at thirty percent, um, of the median area income, right? And so, when you're looking at this, the median household income, I'm sorry, the median household income for Lawrence is thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so, really, affordability is based on a person's or a family's ability to pay no more than thirty percent of their income towards rent and, uh, oftentimes utilities. So, think about that. And so, each, uh, median era income is set according, you know, by, um, primarily by HUD, but according to family size and by region. And so, they look at different income levels, different ranks, and then they average that. And so, that's what our families are making right now, thirty-six thousand. The median area income for a family of three, who's making thirty percent of the poverty rate, it's twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. So, think about that. And so, you're thinking about this as we look at housing, and as you look at housing, uh, we're doing, we're in the process of, uh, uh, finalizing a housing production study with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And based on that study, the average family, uh, household size is about three people. Now, you know, there variations to that, we have a community that's very transient, we have a lot of new people coming in, a loo, a lot of newcomers, but let's base it on that. So, based on that, then a two-bedroom to be considered affordable would be paying fifteen, uh, one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Can you repeat that number for me?
One thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for a family of three with an income of, you know, thirty percent of the median area income. And so, if you were to look at that income, truly, people, families should be paying about, at that rate, really what they truly can afford is about five hundred and ninety-two dollars a month. You tell me what units are affordable at that rate in this city. And so, we're looking at the comparisons, and then fair market rents, we hear a lot about fair market rents. So, HUD, uh, basically sets the fair market rent, and basically it's for home programs, and they're looking at affordability, uh, for Section A, let's say, for thirty percent, right? So, for a two-bedroom, according to a fair market rent, it's one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Only people making between sixty to eighty percent of the poverty rate, right, would be able to afford that. We're doing a lot of, uh, housing production in the city, and it's great, and we bring a lot of outside developers coming in, but a lot of fair market units are being built. Not everyone can afford those. And so, about only, it, the number went up, but only about twenty-eight percent of those are affordable, meaning thirty to eighty percent of the people making the median area income can live there. So, you're looking at this, and then we said, "You know what, that's great, but let's, let's take a snapshot of what's happening really on the ground here in Lawrence." That's what you have before you. So, I had Anna Camargo, who's our home, uh, first-time homebuyer, uh, project, uh, program, uh, officer, uh, do some research with some other members of the team. And if you look at it, for a two-bedroom, can range anywhere between nine hundred to twenty-six hundred dollars in our city. Obviously, that has to do between older housing probably, or, or housing where there have been tenants for a long time, or people that have, uh, have owned that building for a long time and are able to, uh, offer this low rent. If you were to average that out, you're looking at seventeen fifty. So, you, are you seeing the gap? So, we don't have enough units for housing, for affordable, uh, for, uh, that are affordable for our families when we have a community that's very poor. Twenty-eight percent of our community leaves before, uh, below the poverty rate. And so, if you think about that, it's great, we're bringing, bringing a lot of the, um, housing units into, you know, um, by the end of this year, I guess, uh, there's gonna be close to sixteen hundred in total. But there's one thing about the housing units, and then there's the other thing about affordability, and there's a huge gap in between those two. So, the inadequate supply of affordable rental homes, uh, for their lowest, the lowest-income renters, it's, um, it's the case for the United States as a whole, never mind also for Lawrence. Um, we have not kept, uh, have not kept to, uh, pace with the demands over the past decade, and so, I think the efforts that the city have made to build all these, uh, units and bring them... them online, it's, it's, um, it's really needed. And so we're looking at very, a lot of vulnerable families, and that with stable housing, they really could achieve so much more. We're always looking at how can we, uh, impact poverty by providing affordable units, that's one way that we can do that. And so I think that that's some of the units, that's the case, excuse me, of the units that a community action council is looking to, uh, bring online, is thirty-nine units, and they're all between thirty to sixty percent of the income. So a lot of the people are going to be able to afford those, um, locally. Our vacancy rates for the city in two thousand and fifteen were six percent. I want to probably say that, that hasn't changed that much.
Six percent of vacant?
That's our vacancy rate, about six percent for rental housing. When you look at the fact that seventy-two percent of our population rents, and when you look at the fact that most renters in Lawrence have income at, at or below fifty percent of the median area income, you can see the gap.
So let me ask you a quick question. Seventy-two percent of our community rent, so that means twenty-eight percent are homeowners?
Yes. Yes. And if you wanted to own a home, and you're looking at, at the statistics, between what income and affordability and the average sale of a home right now, there's about a hundred and two thousand, uh, gap, housing gap for homeownership. Right? And so not everyone can really own a home, and right now, homes are really skyrocketing, that's, that's the trend right now, right? And so we need, uh, to make critical investments in affordable housing, we need it, it helps our economy, uh, our communities, our families, it really is one of the determinants of a person's health and wellbeing. And so we really need to look at these things as we're looking at building housing and who can afford it, because that's two different things. I, I know that we're looking to promote mixed income housing and mixed income development because it does bring a wide variety of people, but we also need to think about the people that are living here that cannot, cannot afford, uh, to rent or to own. And so, um, I just wanted to share that with you, just to give you sort of a picture of what the affordability, the housing affordability is right now for our city.
Councilors, uh, like I said before, we have this island in front of us for quite a few times. Um, there's any questions for that, uh, or the people in front of us?
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, just, just sort of a, um, a statement. Um, I know I've, every time it's brought up, I've, I've talked about this, um, about some of these issues, and I've talked to Director Vargas about it. So I think my three big concerns are around parking. Um, I think we were last told this, uh, sixty-plus units, uh, of, of, of parking that need to, um, be covered, and I think the conversation was, uh, doing a, a lease with, um, with one of the garages. Uh, the only concern that I have about that is just that, I, I think that, that in itself won't allow a, um, won't, won't push for some of these potential residents to, um, actually park in, let's say, the Buckley Garage, that they'll instead, um, they'll park on the street, you know, at nighttime, and, um, and we, we need to do something more, and one of the things that I, I mentioned to Director Vargas is perhaps on their lease, this could be part of their, sort of, of their lease, to make sure that they're putting a price, um, that they're basically, they're being charged to park at the, uh, the Buckley Garage, whatever garage it might be, and that might nudge them to actually use the garage, because I think with some of the leases that we have now, I don't know if residents are actually, um, using, you know, um, uh, using the lease or using the parking. I think that they might be, um, actually, um, parking out on the street. The second concern that I had, and I think it's a concern of a lot of residents, it's regarding giving this property to, uh, to a non, a nonprofit. I think at the moment, we have, you know, enough evidence to say that, uh, for this particular, at least the particular intention that they're going to be covering, um, they're going to be paying property taxes, but there's always this fear that, you know, in the future, whether it's ten years from now or whenever, that they might go back on that. So, you know, one of the questions I wanted to ask was, um, you know, I don't know if the city would be willing to sort of, you know, on this project, put a restriction on, on the deed. I, I don't know what the language would be, but, um, I think that would definitely sway, you know, that particular fear of mine. Um, third, and I think this is like the biggest one, um, it's, it's around, you know, we, we just had a presentation around, um, uh, the amount of students that are in, in our schools and how we're up, up, up to capacity. Um, you know, I, I do like the fact that in the first floor, there's going to be, uh, commercial, and I think that's, uh, extremely important, uh, but this fact that we're, you know, bringing in thirty different units, um, affordable units, thirty, thirty-nine different units, if we don't do something to, you know, potentially, that could potentially be at the minimum, you know, at least twenty-five new kids in that area, and we're already seeing that we're up to capacity. I know Director Vargas said, mentioned something about, and, um, Dr. Bergeron as well, that there's about a hundred and ninety students that are doubling up, um, you know, you know, potentially if, if the housing was just for these one ninety students, so that, that basically families are already living here, and it was, um, you know, it was written down in this project, I think that would allay sort of those fears as well. And I know I'm sort of bringing up a lot, um, but, you know, I guess my question is, I know we've talked about this a lot, Director Vargas, has, has this been put, um, I know some, some of these changes you're thinking about doing, um, have any of them been actually put on paper?
So, so I'll start with the, with the last thing you said, and we were having conversations about limiting, and, and because it's affordable housing and it receives, uh, federal subsidies, you're, you're supposed to have a, uh, a, a, um, what do you call it, a, um, a lottery for the properties. So when Duckmill, uh, brought their property online, they did a lottery. When Law five fifty, they did a lottery. But there is language that allows you to give preference to certain types of, certain types of, um, of residents. So in having a conversation with both, um, Dr. Bergeron and Mrs. Friedman, they have agreed, um, to make it so that, give priorities to families that are doubling up in our school system, and also families that, that, that go through GLCAC that are on record as, as doubling up. So I, I think what, what that'll do is, is, is put an emphasis on what the real problem is, or one of the major problems, which is people living in housing situations that are less favorable. And if we limit them to, to people that already live here and are on record, whether it be to the school department or through some of the other services that's offered by GLCAC, by restricting that, um, we, we lessen the, the potential for additional families coming into the city and being further dragged into, into the school system and other services. There, she's willing to do that, which I think is awesome. Um, the, the second thing with the deed restriction, so the, based on our conversation and the way I understand it, Mr. Pia, or Councilor Piano, is that, is that the, the, the language would suggest that the prop, property in, under no circumstances could be used for programmatic type of, of services by which they would be deemed nonprofit activities? And, and we can do that as well, um, in conversations with developer and with, with, um, with our legal staff. The other thing that to keep in mind is, when you get these affordable tax credits and these subsidies, you, you know, you, you get, you get a lot of oversight for an extended period of time. I'm not sure the exact number of times, but I, I, a number of years, but I, I think it's at least thirty years that you have to be, be able to provide documentation to these funding agencies suggesting that you're, you're continuing to, to, um, to have the program as, as initially funded. And the third thing about the parking, whenever you go, whenever you go through the process, the zoning board process, you have to provide, um, you have to show that you have sufficient parking. So that, that's not done necessarily here, but it's on part of zoning board. And there are a number of developers on Essex Street that pay, uh, for parking spots. Many of them don't use it, but because it was a requirement of the zoning decision, and I think, um, Councilor Levy knows about that, um, they still pay. So it's whether or not we change the behavior of the people, the developer gets a bill every month saying you have to pay X amount based on your variance. Now, I'm not sure we could change behavior, but the people, the development in downtown, was required to get sufficient amount, sufficient, um, submission, sufficient amount of parking to meet the demand of the development based on the current zoning ordinances. So to your, to your question, it always happens, whether they use it or not, I don't know, but, but someone's being charged for it.
Um, uh, thank you, Director Vargas. I, I think two things to everything you said. One, when it comes to the parking, my issue is, is not, I mean, great, the city's getting, you know, extra money, that, I think that's great. I think my concern with that is just that, you know, at nighttime especially, um, it's going to be harder to park in that, you know, um, in that area. Um, you know, potentially bringing in sixty-plus, you know, new cars there, when we have, I think someone told me forty thousand something cars and, you know, registered in the city, um, I think that's, it's a, it's a little concerning for people that are, you know, that might be going to do business in the area or other people that are, um, you know, that are parking their sixteen new cars, I think is a, is a huge issue. Um, and I think the, whatever we've been doing in the past hasn't really been working. Um, I mean, you said it yourself, it doesn't sound like people are, developers are paying for it, but they're not using it. Um, I think that when the develop, when the, uh, building owners, when they put it as, you know, if they're paying five hundred dollars a month plus thirty, forty dollars for a garage, they're more likely to use it because, um, they are paying for it. Um, so that's just, you know, my thoughts on it. And secondly, um, you know, it's great that you're, you're working on all this now, is, is any of this sort of on, on paper now? Or is this something that, because sort of the, the project that you, you outline a project for us, you know, a month plus, um, and that's what we're currently, um, discussing right now, and we're going to vote on.
Right.
Are any of these things that you've talked about, have you amended that, like, are you presenting an amended project? Like how, um, you know, and, and I know that, um, you know, we're all well-intentioned, I, I'm just trying to look like something that's a formalizes, um, sort of your statements.
Yeah, I think, you know, you're right, there, actually, before we answer that question, but the parking, I, I wouldn't suggest that it's, it's, it's not working. Um, you know, the par, parking in downtown Lawrence isn't that difficult, with exception of this block that we, that we're in now. So if you're in this block, you, you have challenges finding parking spots. But outside of this block where we are, it's pretty easy to find a parking spot. Um, and, and, and just, just, I mean, based on my experiences, if you go out there right now and just drive down the street, there's a lot of open spaces. But that, that's just one thing, and you may want to respond to that, but the, the second thing in terms of memor, um, having a document that refers to all the things, that's something that, that we could work on to, to actually have something on paper that reflects what we're saying, so that it's not just rhetoric, it's, it's actual, something that we, that, that we could commit someone to. That could be done before the full council. Right?
So just one.
You can come over. Damon Ardis for the record, please.
I'm Evelyn Friedman, I'm the Director of the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council, we're at three oh five Essex Street. If the council votes for these things with these restrictions, then it would just be put in the deed when we close the project, acquire the project.
You can make a condition of your vote.
Right. So then, then it would be documented.
Yeah, that, that's, that's another way of doing it, make, just like you put restrictions on, on vacant parcels where it has to be green space, you could put that as a condition of your, of the council vote, you could do that as well.
Councilor Larry.
Um, Evelyn, thank you, Mr. President. One of the things is like you mentioned, okay, yes, I'm having the problem with the parking, that we already rented some fifty-seven space to the city, we have to pay monthly, the tenant do not use it. This is going to be, or whatever, are you going to charge to the, to the tenant for the using of the parking, or it's going to be part of the rent?
That, that's not for us to decide. So we, we, the, the city puts a requirement on the property owner to, um, to make sure that they meet the parking demand, and how they manage the, the, the revenue stream and or the expense is totally up to the developer. So, so we, we never manage the, the, you know, the, the, the front-facing client person, we don't, we don't, we don't deal with the tenant, we deal with the property owner, the developer, and that's who we have the relationship with. So they have, they themselves have to manage that, the, the, those specifics, the developer.
And just one point of clarification in talking with Ms. Freeman, um, because of rent restrictions, already thirty percent and sixty percent of their paying, it, they cannot charge the tenants for, for parking. So once again, it's like any other, um, development.
It will be all section eight?
No, they are, I'll tell you right now, there's, uh, there's eight units that are going to be section eight.
Correct?
Eight units that are going to be section eight, which is thirty percent of the median area income, and then, uh, the remaining thirty-one are going to be sixty percent.
Okay. So this is the low-income people, so it's going to be thirty, thirty-one?
They're all considered low-income. One is extremely low, one is low.
They are all in low-income, so but there's only eight unit is going to have section eight.
Only eight units, they're going to accept section eight. The remaining units are under, uh, what's considered.
Low-income, yes, because people sometimes confuse about the low-income and it's also the, their restriction of the thirty percent, yes, people consider, yeah. So practically, most of the people that use the other unit is going to be people that work, and their income is low to the percent, so whatever the amount of the family, uh, two, three, or four person, that's, uh, for those unit.
Yes, and I'm assuming that the parking.
Are they going to have also, uh, the other program that is called tax credit or CBH or all of those program too?
I can't answer that question, because what's before me and what was before us in the, in the, um, application, I don't believe that makes reference to that. Can you answer that question, Mr.?
I didn't hear the, I didn't, I didn't hear the question, what was the question?
It's going to be any unit with tax credit attachment to, to those program or to those unit, which program?
CBH unit.
Or?
CBH. I, this is community-based program, it practically is staying as section eight is, uh, it can be like a thirty-six, thirty, forty, sixty, uh, also, but like it's managed by agency, but also by the Department of Public Health.
Department of Public Health?
Yes.
No, the, we will have, section eight will be, um, hopefully we will get that from the state, so there'll be section eight units. And I just want to clarify, people who have section eight, most of the time work, I just want people to understand.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I know.
Okay. And then we will have, um, tax credits, low, low-income housing tax credits.
Low-income housing tax credit.
Right. That's for people at sixty percent?
You have a sixty, forty, or you have a thirty, forty, uh, the twenty, forty?
Well, low-income housing tax credits are for si, people at sixty percent of the area median income.
So you're going to have a forty, sixty?
I don't know what forty, sixty means.
Yeah, that is the minimum attached. It can be the twenty, forty, or the forty, sixty.
Well, we will have, everybody will be.
For low-income housing tax credit.
Everybody will be at least at sixty percent.
At least the sixty percent on there, yes. You have a home program too?
A health program?
Home program.
We'll, we'll have home probably, and that's fifty percent of the area median income.
Okay, thank you.
Councilors, Councilor LaPlante.
Thank you for, first of all, I just want to applaud, um, the presenters this evening. These charts are, are very helpful and informative. I did not know the depth of our, um, I mean, anecdotally, I, I was aware of how much the price for rents are in the, in the city, but to have this research done affirms and confirms what, anecdotally, we hear, number one, and number two, the housing production that was provided as well is very helpful, so we really get a sense as to the, um, amount of, um, units that are, have been developed over the course of at least since two thousand and fourteen. So first of all, thank you so much for making us more informed on this, so I, I do appreciate that. Um, no surprise, I've got concerns with it, um, I do appreciate the arguments for, and you make very strong arguments, um, you talk about how we can't, our residents can't afford a place to live, you talk about the fact that our residents are actually doubled up in many different places, you're talking about the income difficulties as well to be able to afford things, like, these are, these are true. I mean, I, I'm not going to be able to debate or argue those things, so those are factual. Um, well, I guess where I, where I, where I differ, I guess, and this is where I'm making my points, um, is on a couple of things. Uh, one is, um, well, let me talk about the money first. So these units, people will be paying taxes on it, that's good. Um, but I'm here, unless I hear differently, the rate of the taxation, because the subsidized housing or affordable housing is going to be a reduced rate. So as I understand it, there are three different components, there are, um, there are components of, of, if you, if you are a nonprofit, this is, this is not this particular case, if you're a nonprofit, to. If you're a nonprofit, if you're a church, for example, you don't pay taxes, right? If you're a government, obviously, if you're a state, you don't pay taxes. So there are different places you don't pay taxes and certain nonprofits don't pay. So this has nothing to do with that. Then there's the subsidized housing, low-income housing. You do pay taxes, but it's at a different rate than if it was market-rate housing. That's at a far more, that's at a far different rate, so you get more money. So this right here, unless I hear differently or understand differently, that's my basic understanding, and I, and so that's, that's what I'm going with. That's, so we just need to make sure we're aware of that. That's number one. Number two, the underlying problem of the, we call it the doubling up. And what I think is a very creative solution, which is what we're talking about here is we're, we're looking to target through preps and amendment. We're looking to target that this deed will have on there, that the preferences will be provided to individuals who are currently doubled up. Now, granted, it's through a lottery, so you have to win the lottery or be in the lottery, and then you would, then you would have to show that you are part of that group, right? Am I understanding that correctly? If not, please correct.
You, you can create a preference. So you only use the lottery the first time you rent up. So if you have, let's say you have, we have thirty-nine units and we have a hundred people who apply. The, the, you use the lottery that first time, and then you, after people have gone into the units, then you keep using, let's, the first thirty-nine and then the next sixty-one would come off that lottery list. But you can create a preference for people who are, who are homeless or unhoused or inappropriately housed. So that's what you're requesting to do. The challenge there will be making sure we find those people. So we already know that in the school department, they're aware of the people, the students who are, therefore, the families who are homeless. At G L C A C, we have the same condition where we have small children whose families are homeless, so we would be able to find those families. And we'd have to make sure that those families apply. That would be the biggest challenge.
So thank you. So I appreciate the explanation. What we're doing here, even when the scenario is, we're just shifting people, people who have needs, right? In a place where it's in, what do you call it, an unbeneficial environment, or it is favorable, unfavorable environment to a place that's more favorable, I get that. But what we're not attacking is the underlying root of this whole situation, and that we could do that for these sets of people, but it doesn't mean that we're not gonna stop having those kinds of individuals facing these same challenges. And they may, I hate to use, these are so scientific, these are so, these words are awful, backfill, it sounds so, that's an awful word to use. But, but, but people who maybe are affected positively, doesn't mean that we're gonna, that there's not gonna be more people in the future, in very near future, perhaps very next day, who are suffering with the same kind of afflictions, problems, challenges. And we're just, we're just shifting it. We're not really dealing with the problem, yeah, we are dealing with that one person, but the bigger problem, we're not. So, which goes to the other, my, I think my last point, which is, this is a, not a Lawrence problem, this is a regional problem. And no one is talking, I haven't yet to hear of that being discussed yet. We have the Great, Greater Lawrence Community Action Council. The word greater needs to be, needs to be amplified. It's not just Lawrence, but it's all our surrounding communities. While you were speaking, I was able to look at the standard housing inventory, S H I. Unfortunately, the data that I was able to pull up really quickly was from two thousand ten. I suspect there's probably more, far more, or far more better information. But our city, we, from at least two thousand ten, we're doing our share. I mean, when we look at percentages, fifteen percent of our, of our housing stock is classified as subsidized housing inventory, S H I. And just to give you some perspective, again, two thousand ten, there's only one community, shockingly, nearby that has met that ten percent threshold. You're never gonna guess this, it's our neighboring town of Andover. Andover's got thirteen point three, not quite the fifteen that we're at, but they're at thirteen point three. Let me throw out a couple of the numbers of other communities, so we have an idea of what we're talking about here. Drake at five point two, Tuxbury nine point seven, Methuen nine, North Andover eight point two, Lowell, Lowell twelve point five, they're meeting it, and Lynn, I just another, another big city, twelve point four. But even with all those, we're still number one, right? We still are doing more, comparatively speaking, with our ratios than any other community. And if you have more numbers, I'd be delighted to hear what those are, but that was just two thousand ten. So my underlying opinion here is that it's great that we're trying to do this, but why is it that our city is the city that is taking this lead at such an aggressive posture? And what are other communities doing about it? If we're, one more thing, if we're willing to build a middle class in the city, we can do all these things here and then our population moves out. They move out to a better place, where there's better housing, whatever, there's more grass, maybe the schools are a little bit better, whatever the situation is, right? We are not retaining and building a middle class, mainly because we're starting to, this, this number, this fifteen, may be growing. And it will be growing after, if we adopt this, this evening, it's another, how many units we've got there, thirty-nine units, that's going to grow. So I'll stop there and, and listen to your rebuttal, I guess.
So you're saying, why are we dealing with this? Lawrence is the only community that has this demographics.
Say what, I'm sorry?
We are the only community in the Commonwealth right now. We're the poorest community in the Commonwealth.
Sure.
So you're looking at poverty as a root cause. When are we gonna end poverty? That's very difficult to achieve. And so in our community, you have to look at economic development, jobs, and education. Three major things. Until we start changing and shifting that demographic, you're not gonna see a lot of change. People come to Lawrence for several reasons. One of them has to do with probably cheaper housing. If you look at Andover, North Andover, Methuen, unless you go to Havre, where you can see nowadays, you can find cheaper housing, this is where you're gonna come, number one. Number two, we're the demographics. Even though we're shifting about seventy-seven, seventy-eight, probably I wanna say, I will venture and say about eighty percent of our population are Latinos. So me as an immigrant, and I was born in this country and I still see myself as an immigrant. When I came to this country, I started in Manchester, New Hampshire. And we moved out a year and a half later because there was no connectivity. So what do people do? They tend to migrate to where, places where the people look like you. So we're not gonna see that change. You have a lot of newcomers. Newcomers have many challenges. So you have English as a, as a barrier, right? You have people working, the average salary for a renter, it's nineteen dollars and seventy cents. If you do the math, how many parents have two jobs to be able to afford a unit? Most of our households are led by women, single parents. Most of our households. And so family of three, most likely, if we were to dig deeper, you're probably looking at single mom with two children. Or a couple with a child. I don't know. But until we start addressing the issue of poverty, which is very difficult to tackle, our demographics are gonna be pretty much difficult to shift. Third thing is, all of the services are here. Social services are mostly here. And so you tend to sort of go to places where you get assistance, right? And so when you look at all these things, what we're trying to do is address an issue of housing affordability and, and, and lack of housing. That's what we're trying to do with what we have right now, which is difficult to tackle. You mentioned that we met the ten percent. We are, we have met that ten percent. We are above that, and we're doing really well. We're part of a regional effort with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission that it's looking at, at housing production regionally, and then also looking at developing our housing production locally. And so it's in a draft form right now, but as soon as that document is finalized, I'll be happy to share it with all of you to look at all the findings, key findings that they, that were, that came about as a result of that assessment, but also what are the recommendations from Lawrence moving forward that then, they don't only have to do with creating new housing, but rather looking at ordinances and looking at other things, including capacity building also. So those are the things. I mean, it's very difficult to say why are we paying, why are we, we're not moving forward? Why are we still dealing with this issue? Why are the only ones with this? But if you look at our demographics, it's very difficult to, to make a shift. And if we just stand and not think about or address it, then the double up housing is gonna be triple up housing. I don't think that we're gonna address this issue. And, and I wish there was a way to really collect data on double up housing. I really hope so. And I was hoping that for the census twenty twenty, we have good numbers because with that climate right now, I don't know how many really families are gonna come forward to fill out their census and really give you true information. And so, I mean, this is poverty, it's, it's a major issue. And so, I don't know, we're doing everything within our power to look at, I mean, the planning department, planning and development department, it's working together. And I've been, I haven't been, I've only been a community development director for six months now. But I've been in that department since two thousand ten. And I think that in the last four, five years, I've seen a huge shift in the way that business is conducted, in the way that we're talking to one another and aligning our needs and really strategizing to make sure that all parts, all departments are working collaboratively to address issues and not just in silos like it's been done many years in the past. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, but I hear you. I, I hear you. I understand what you're saying, so.
I think Counselor Levy had some questions as well.
Yes. Counselor Larry?
I have one more question, and I'm sorry. All the units are going to be low-income housing tax credit or just?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so one of the things, I, I know that there is sort of a push to try to move this up to the full city council. But my, my, in particular, my, my big concern is around, you know, the, adding extra people into our school system when it's at full capacity. If there was language here that could address that and, you know, have me clearly understand what, you know, what the program would be, that could address the restriction, could address the parking. You know, it's, it's, it's one thing. I don't know if, if, if we have that language here. I'd rather that that language be thought out than just us trying to think it through in the next couple of minutes.
Yeah.
So in that case, I don't know where the committee is feeling. But I, I would want this to be tabled so that way that language can be put in there.
Let's put it this way. If we move it up to the full council with either or no recommendation, can we put that, that report together?
So I-
So, I mean, yes, I just wanted to put in perspective to see whether or not they'd be able to do that, or, and then we can make a decision based on that.
I, I, I think the, the answer to that question is, we can do that. But, but as was recommended, we could also, we could also make a condition of your vote. And, I mean, Counselor LaPlante may know this better than I can in terms of the mechanics of that, but it-
Anything, if any vote is gonna take place, it's gonna be take, it's gonna take place at the full council.
Got it. I understand that.
So if from now to the full council meeting, that can happen. But in the meantime, it is, it is a, another concern, whether or not we can develop the restriction, and we can develop some that type of, that type of concerns that we have and approach that between now and to the full council meeting in case we decide to move it up.
Yeah.
That's not a decision right now, but I just wanted to know whether or not that can happen.
Yeah, I, I think, I think two of the three can happen. I think the, the issue with the, with the deed restriction and ensuring that the property is not programmatic and continues to be housing in perpetuity, that can be done, and, and there could be some language on limiting the availability of these units, at least in preference to people that currently live in the city and are currently identified as doubling up. I think those two things we can do. In terms of the parking, that's a function of, of, that's a land use function that's administered through, through the, through the zoning board. And, you know, that's where that concern is, is carried, is carried and talked about and, and addressed. And we think there's sufficient, as the administration, we think there's sufficient parking within the area to accommodate the amount of units coming online. And, you know, it's, you know, I, I, I asked you that, when you leave here, drive down Essex Street. And, and when you leave here, drive down Methuen Street, right behind where this building is, and look how many, how many parking spaces there are there. And see how many are available, and that'll speak to the existing capacity of parking in and around this area for, for nighttime parking.
How many new, new units you're gonna have over there on Methuen Street? Probably three hundred.
Where?
On Methuen Street.
But they're also creating three hundred parking spaces inside of the building.
So it's, but not everybody, you know, we're gonna have visitors. Those parking spaces on Methuen Street are-
Listen, we, listen, we're, I, I think, I think my, my issue with the parking question is, we, we can't, we can't set city policies with suburban ideologies. We're, we're not, we're not Andover, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not one of those towns. If you go to any place in this, in this country where people wanna be, in city centers, parking is a problem. And it's much more of a problem than it is in the city of Lawrence. We're gonna, we're putting together a parking study that's gonna be rolled out. It was a request, it was at the request of the fiscal overseer. And they've done counts on multiple days, multiple times of the day. And once the report comes out, you'll see that, as it currently stands, though there are certain pockets within downtown, they may have parking issues. More broadly, parking is not an issue.
Okay, let me just freak up on the, on the parking issue.
Or it's less of an issue than I had thought of.
These thirty-nine units, they are not gonna be required by the city to have thirty-nine units on any other place or any, any other, they're not gonna be required to have thirty-nine parking spots somewhere, sixty.
Plus sixty-something.
Yes.
They're gonna be required. Who's gonna look into that? You say the licensing board, that, that, the zoning board?
No, no, so-
So just, just clarify that.
So we, we, the developer has to make available parking spaces, whether they have it onsite as part of their development or they're able to pay for it offsite. In the past, when we've had these, these, these developments in downtown, most developers don't have parking onsite, onsite because of the density. They go and they speak with us, the city, or they speak with another person that has a vacant lot in downtown, and they enter into an agreement. They bring that agreement to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting and present it to suggest that they are meeting the parking requirements as, as required by our zoning ordinances. Now, in terms of the enforcement of that, you know, we make the spaces available. We don't, we don't change, we don't change human behavior. What I, what I can tell you that changes human behavior is the fact that you have a number of people walking up and down the street giving tickets. So, you know, whether, whether we do it, whether we do it as a matter of, of practice, which we don't, it is getting done by a third party, Republic Parking, that makes sure that between the hours of eight and six o'clock, people aren't on the street for less, more than two hours.
So let me, let me ask you, Director Vargas. So if, if we approve this, this project, and the projects go through, and let's say perhaps that they forgot about the parking restriction that they have two years from now. We're not gonna do anything about it?
No, we, they, we have, I mean, ask Counselor Levy, she, she's been paying parking in her building for a very long time. And, and that, 'cause that, that was a requirement of the zoning decision way back when, so-
So what, do we have the, do we have the enforcement for that? Do we check on to that?
We, we send them a-
The city gotta check into that, right? Because I mean, somehow, how, how are we gonna do, how, how is this being done?
We, we send them bills every month and they have to pay it. And, and if they don't, then we have, we have within our means to, to lean property.
So, okay, so they, they got into a contract with the city for that amount of space. The city send the bill every month and they need to pay for it.
Right.
Is that, that's the way that we've been doing it?
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I'm a counsel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think the concern is, so that the city is charging, you know, th- these buildings for the space. But as Director Vargas said, a lot of these folks are not even using it. I, I would say that you, Director Vargas, I would agree with you that in most downtown areas, you would want it to be packed, but you would want it to be packed with people that are gonna go in and do commerce. They're gonna go in to restaurants or, you know, are gonna shop around, not necessarily that it's in, that your entire downtown is just people living in there.
Right.
There, there is an issue with, that even if they're leasing, if, if they have to park two, three blocks away from where they're living, it is very likely that they won't park there. So I think even though you are, you are telling us these are two separate things, I can't see it as two separate things because-
Can I get a motion to go pass then?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Follow some favor policy, aye?
Aye.
You might continue.
Uh, thank you. I, I, I think that they're tied together, and I don't see, I, 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 I can't understand now why it can't be addressed in this, in the proposal that you're, you're giving to us.
We, we could put language on there, and, and really, the council has, has the authority to, when, when voting, to, to, to vote with certain conditions. You can do that. I, I just, the, the normal course of action in terms of, you know, land use issues, it's addressed either at the zoning board or planning board, depending on what it falls- it's addressed either at the zoning board or planning board, depending on what it falls under, what category it falls under. And that's just the way that the city has operated, um, when it relates to parking. So not to suggest that the, the, it's outside of the purview of the, of the council to make recommendations, I think that's, that's, you know, it is. Um, but just to, to, to help clarify that there is a process already in place to account for issues such as, as parking and other dimensional requirements and issues. So I don't know if that answered your question, Counsel, but-
Counsel President?
The problem in here is no, the parking, like it, it's a, I pay fifty-nine parking space, my resident do no use because they has to go to Methuen Street, and they don't use it, and they prefer to park in, on, on, on the street. So the problem is the, is the enforcement. So they park in there, it doesn't matter, there is snowing, there is raining, the whatever, so they park, and, you know, and sometimes it's pretty hard for you to get a parking space, and on Essex Street, let's say, because this is the area. So this is the problem. It's the enforcement of the parking laws, if we have some, and they say not to park here from this time to this time.
So there's parking restrictions between eight and six. So after six, there, there is no one policing the street. So it, it is possible that, that folks would park on the street between the hours of six P M and eight A M, um, six P, yeah, six P M and eight A M. That's, that's totally possible. But, you know, it's, 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 it's not, you know, most, most of the, the retail businesses, and we'd like to change this, of course, we, we want businesses to be open for longer periods of time, we don't just want it to be open between nine and five, but as it currently stands, most of the businesses in downtown are open from nine to five, with the exception of the night staff, the nighttime establishments, um, of which I don't believe there's any on that side, if I can remember correctly, you know? I don't think so.
There is a motion.
Uh, I think I, I, I asked motion table.
Can you make a motion?
But I can, you, you were about to ask questions, but your chair stopped late.
No, I mean, you will join, and you will join if we keep on, if we keep on the discussion.
Yep, so I, I, I will draw for now.
I mean, it was not a second, so. So, um, Director Vargas, how many spaces do we have on those lots?
The, I, I think the, the one on Methuen Street were more limited, to be honest. I mean, there, there are some existing leases there, and we, we, we're not capped, but we may not be able to cover all of the parking spaces that's being asked of us, where there's real capacity is in the, in the Buckley Garage.
So are you full capacity right now renting those?
I, I can't say that with certainty, but, but I do know that there is existing leases in place for those, for those parking lots. Where we do have a tremendous amount of capacity is at the Buckley Garage, which is a block away from this building.
Counselors, um, what's the desire on this item? I think that we should, um, move on this item and to do something at the full council, but if you still have concerns, issues, and, uh, questions, uh, it is, it is up to you to either debate those here, or at the full council level.
Uh, Mr. Chair-
What is the preference?
I, I'd like to motion to, to table this. I think that, uh, there's certain language that we talked about that I'd like to see presented here, um, before it gets to the full council.
And those are the three questions.
Correct.
Uh, you have?
Yeah, I, it's, it's, it's the will of, of the, of the council, of course. Um, you know, I, I think we've, um, between myself and, 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 and Director Martinez Dominguez and some other folks, I think we've, we've provided a lot of information and, and done some good research in terms of our position and what we consider this project to be, and, and, um, we'd hope that there'd be, be some level of good faith in terms of our ability to, or not, not only our ability, but our, our, our position to, to be able to commit to some of the things that have been spoken of. I understand it's, it's always, it's always better to confirm than, than, than to blindly trust, I get that. Um, but, you know, we've, we've done a substantial amount of work to get us to this point. Uh, this is our third housing community meeting, I think, third? So, you know, so we, we feel, we feel that we've presented a pretty comprehensive argument, and, and I understand that it's not the council's vote, um, to, it's not the council's, um, you don't have to vote just based on effort, you base, you vote per, based on what you feel is, is prudent. But in terms of additional information gathering and/or additional commitments to be made, I think we've done that to this point. Um, and I, and I hope you, you know, the, the council sees that, um, in good faith, and, and, and trust that the, what's being asked of us is something that we could deliver. I won't say anything else, but-
All right, Counselors, what's the motion?
So, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, so I already, uh, mentioned the motion, I don't know if you've asked for seconds yet?
Uh, there is a motion on the table.
Second.
There is a motion on the table, and properly second. All of us, if we will, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please. Uh, Counsel LePiana?
Aye.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Um, and I vote yes. Counsel, uh, the coun, the council have the table this item. I think it. All right, Counselors, we have a minute from, from February thirteen. Can I get a motion to get, um, minutes from February thirteen, uh, to approve minutes from, uh, February thirteen, two thousand and eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
All of us, if we will, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, Counselors, there is any, there is any other, um, item that you would like to, uh, take care of the table manners?
Uh, I think there is. Um, a question for the ch-
I'd like to take document number, um, on the last page, two eighty-eight B dash ten, Kingston and Salem Street Group Office, off the table items.
Uh, one oh eight ten?
Two eighty-eight B ten.
Okay.
For the purposes, for the purposes of withdrawing.
Really?
Uh, second?
All of us, if we will, please say aye.
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 So the, for the purpose of withdrawing?
Yeah, I'm looking to withdraw, two eighty-eight B dash ten, Kingston and Salem Street Group. It's been on the council since I was many years ago, six years ago.
All right, uh, motion to send it to the full council for withdrawal.
That's my motion.
So, okay. Right, that was-
I'm with, I'm with you on this, whatever you wanna do, I don't care, that's fine.
It's, that's exactly what you wanna do, to withdraw them all?
Yeah.
No, he wanted to withdraw.
So, so, so it's now, it's being presented now, right, so?
Yeah, we voted to, to have it out of the table, man.
Yep, and I'll make a motion to withdraw.
No, we can make a motion to, uh, to withdraw.
Second.
All of us, if we will, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. There is any other, uh-
I'd like to make a motion to take document three sixty-four ten, Housing Receivership Program.
I was gonna do that right now.
I'm sorry, I'll take it off the table?
Uh, which one is that one?
Uh, two eighty, uh, two sixty-four ten, the Housing Receiver-
Two sixty-four ten.
On the last page.
Okay, I see it, yep.
There is a motion on the table?
Second.
All of us, if we will, please say aye.
Aye.
Item three sixty-four ten is the Housing Receivership Program. Uh, there is any question or concern about this item?
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
This question?
No.
Why do you want to withdraw?